Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Finance and Operations Committee meeting and also the Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting for July 27, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As permitted by the Board's Section 520.1 Resolution and due to the circumstances giving rise to that resolution, the Board is holding this advertised public meeting virtually. The procedures for this virtual meeting are more fully detailed in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures and include those for public participation. Dr. McGary, would you please outline the public participation procedures, sir?
Yes, Board President Brown, thank you. As we've moved to virtual meetings, the Board has made every effort to continue to engage with the public and ask for input prior to making decisions tonight. During our committee meeting will be no different. Items that are discussed tonight before the Board decides whether they move them forward, any actual items, they'll take comment or questions from the public. In order for the public to participate, we ask that you do one of two options. One, that you send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbsd.org, or that you phone in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000, and you can leave a voicemail. Whether you're sending an email or sending a voicemail, please make sure that you provide your name, your address, and for tonight's meetings, there'll be two. One, for Education and Pupil Services, followed, and after that, a Finance and Operations meeting. That you make sure that you identify the agenda item that you'd like to comment on or ask a question, and we'll be sure to address that to the best of our ability this evening. I'll provide an update as we go after each agenda item, because I think we have some tonight that may be a little bit lengthy, to provide those who are tuning in maybe later some access to contact with us.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee will please come to order. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
I'm present.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Mitchell.
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Currie.
I am present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. In order to allow this meeting to continue virtually and as permitted by Policy 003, I move to suspend portions of the following policies. From Policy 006, I move to suspend language in the section titled "Public Participation" to remove the words "present at a board meeting" and thereby allowing board members of the public to participate through the other means we have provided. In Policy 006.1, I move to suspend the language "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." This will allow as many board members as necessary to participate remotely. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye opposed and state your name for the record. Anyone abstaining, please say aye abstain and state your name for the record. That motion carries. I will now turn over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to my co-chair, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Mr. Rogers, please begin with an overview of your agenda items for this evening, and once finished, feel free to roll right into the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three agenda items. The first up is the 2021 bond issuance update, which is informational. We'll provide an update on the finalized 2021 bond issuance and the positive impact that it will have on the district's capital plan. And this item correlates with Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. Agenda item number two is a board policy, a discussion around board policies for public meetings. This will possibly require board action. The school board wishes to review and possibly update policies governing school board meetings, school board committee meetings, and special voting meetings, as the Board has adopted new practices during COVID-19 pandemic. Board members responsible for this policy will present examples of language that the Board may wish to adopt. The policies that may be affected include, but are not limited to, Policy 003 functions, 005 organizations, 006 meetings, 006.1 attendance at meetings via electronic communications, and 903, public participation in board meetings. The third agenda item is policies for this, between first and second reading. This will require board action, Policy 805, emergency preparedness, and 805.2, school security personnel. So we'll jump right into the bond update for 2021. So as the Board and the public knows from our previous meetings and throughout the past years, we've been issuing bonds over each year in order to move forward with our capital improvement plan. This is no different in 2021. We've provided updates in the past, but tonight we'll discuss the finalization of the bond. So here's an overview that we'll discuss tonight, which is the bond issuance timing, the positive impact of the bond, and the capital improvements that the money will be used to increase and improve the assets in the district. So first up, the bond timing. The Board approved the MAX parameters resolution on May 11, 2021. Following that, we move forward with the process of going through the actual bond issuance. The next step in that was in Moody's Interview, which is Moody's Rating Industry, which gives you a credit opinion. So on June 24, I participated in an interview with a Moody's analyst who asked many questions about the finances of the district. Subsequent to that, on June 30, the analyst and Moody's Rating Industry issued a credit opinion of A1 Stable, which is consistent with the past two years of our rating, which is great, especially when you consider being in a pandemic, that financially, they see us as a stable entity. Following that, that allows us to go out and have our financial advisors advertise and go out for pricing and eventually have a rate lock, which was done on July 8, 2021. Subsequent to tonight, we'll have on August 8, the actual settlement. So everything's been finalized and signed off on, and we'll discuss what the results were. So again, similar to last year, we actually improved the rate this year. Last year was just above 2%, and we were extremely excited about the low rate. This year, it actually went down. So last year, we had a similar presentation for the 2020 bond, and we were very excited about the historically low rate, just over 2%. This year, the average yield comes out to 1.67. And similar to last year, we had discussed this, it's not the same as a, it's not a fixed rate each year, but the average year yield over the 30 years of the bond works out to 1.67. So in the beginning stages, the rate's actually below that, it's below 1%. As you get into the further years, the rate creeps up a little bit, but it averages out at 1.67, which is a phenomenal rate, which shows the district will save on the interest side of issuing the bond, which leads me right into the financial savings due to that low interest rate. Again, because of the low interest rate and the timing of the bond through the budget process, we've actually been able to have a very, very minimal impact to the budget going into '21, '22, which we had discussed during the budget presentation. Finally, this is the most exciting part about it. You know, the bond came out at a little over $36 million at the bond amount. There was a premium built in, which gave us roughly $40 million in cash that will be able to be put into the capitalized program to spend on capital improvements throughout the district. And this is just to show an illustration, similar to the ones we've seen in the past, of how low the rates are. You can see on that top graph, it goes back, I believe, 20 or 30 years there, and see the rates just creeping down. Then the cutout on the bottom is over the past 12 months, and you'll see that the rate really stabilized. We were a little concerned going in the process, and we tried to move a little faster than we did last year, because there were some concerns from our advisors that there was a chance the rates were going to start creeping up. Luckily, they stayed level with where they were when we were in the process, and we did take advantage of that low rate. So just to discuss the $40 million and how it will be allocated and which projects. So just a quick overview, and I'll kind of step back after I go through each one and add a little bit of information here. We're going to continue to do toilet renovations at Beverly Hills, which this would be the second phase. We are evaluating the other elementary schools that have not had their toilet renovations yet to determine which will be done, but we plan in the summer of '22 to go through another toilet renovation. Currently, we have Stonehurst completed and Bywood underway this year, that we're funded through the 2020 bond. We will, the funds will be used to continue design and construct and renovate at 8201 North Lansdown Ave, which will be the new central administration, maintenance, and transportation site, or renovate it. The next is the Aronimic Elementary School renovation in addition, Clifton Heights Middle School preconstruction, and a new elementary school preconstruction. Both of those are preconstruction phase, meaning going through the process, actually designing and working through all of the process to get to the point where we can actually bid the project. So the funds will be used to support the, moving both of those projects forward. We'll also include the track and field renovations at Drexel Middle School and Beverly Hills Middle School. So when you look at this list, it looks very familiar to the 2020 list, really because that goes right in line with our capital improvement plan. Toilet renovation, we are going to continue to improve the toilet facilities throughout the district, which we, by next year, will have both middle schools done. We've done a wing at the high school. We'll have two elementaries done, and in next summer, work on a third. And we'll continue to go through that process over the next few summers. 8201 and Aronimic specifically, as well as Clifton Heights, were also on this list in 2020. If you recall, we weren't able to issue as much money as we would have liked to because of the low rates in 2020, because Aronimic was under appeal, and we could not fund the entire project through that bond, because we didn't know the likelihood of the process and how long it was going to take. Luckily, we've had positive results through the process. Aronimic's bids have been awarded, the work is underway, and therefore, we had to shift money around in the 2020 bond. So the 2020 bond still covered a portion of Aronimic, 8201, and Clifton, but now that we've moved past that preconstruction phase and now into the construction phase, we're picking up the bulk of the project in this new issuance. Similar to Clifton Heights and the new elementary school, you'll likely see those as we move through years and any new issuance, because the funds aren't fully there to construct the, a new middle school and a new elementary school. But you'll see that similarity from slide to slide, from last year's presentation to this. So at this time, just to ask if the Board has any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Rogers. That was great. Yeah, definitely if anybody has any questions, but I do like really inexpensive borrowed money. And that is, that is, that 1.67, that's an average, right?
That's correct.
Over the years. So some days, it's less, or some years is less, some years is more, but that's the overall average. And that is just, that is just great work, Mr. Rogers. I really appreciate it. I think everybody on the Board and the entire community appreciates it, and that's just fantastic. I'm glad you were in there on the interview with Moody's. I'm glad you were able to get this done. I believe Dr. Hague has a short comment, and then Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Fields, and thank you, Mr. Rogers, for the presentation. I'd just always like to sort of remind any listeners that getting a good credit rating is not changing the fact that we're still a very underfunded district. I think sometimes people lose sight of the difference between our income and our management of our finances, and Mr. Rogers, obviously, and his team, they do an excellent job, but think of us like a low-income household that nevertheless pays all their bills on time, does everything they can to scrimp and save and pinch, and so they get a good credit rating, and that's great, but it doesn't mean that they really have enough money for all their needs. It means they're constantly scrimping and saving every little bit they can. So thank you to your team, and I'm also excited we're saving some money.
Thanks, Dr. Hague. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Director Fields, and thank you, Mr. Rogers, for your presentation. My question is regarding refinancing. Could you review, were there any refinancing opportunities for the outstanding bonds that are still active, like 2010, 2011, 2015, 2018, and such?
Sure. So over the past year, we actually did refinance two. They were notes. We refinanced them into a bank loan, because there was the term, and just off the top of my head, I believe the term was around, I think there was less than five years left on each, which allowed us to do a short-term borrowing in the refinance versus going out for another general obligation and spreading it out over many further years. We consolidated two and refinanced them into a bank loan at a much lower rate, which saved the district. I believe the final amount was roughly around $80,000 over the next, I believe it was five years. And although it's not a staggering amount, it was still something that was great for us to be able to go out and see some kind of savings. The rest of our bonds that are issued are not at a point where they would be able to be refinanced. Those two that we did refinance, we got in a very unique situation with where the rates dropped to over the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Yeah, I just wanted to hear about that additional money saved, but through those refinancing options, and I think even though you said, you know, even though it doesn't seem like a lot of money, it does add up, you know, when you combine it with the other savings that you and your team do throughout these past years. So thank you again.
And my next, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was getting ready to say, thank you, Mr. Neal, and Board President Brown, please go ahead.
Thank you, Don. Craig, I just wanted to ask, I mean, obviously, thanks to you and your team, we've been fiscally responsible, and we're actually being good stewards of the resources, no matter how meager. Are you seeing other districts, or are you aware of other districts whose bond rating was adversely affected because of COVID? I mean, obviously, ours hasn't, but I'm just curious to know.
So right now, Moody's is, and typically, they are, very adverse to increasing your rating, giving you a better rating. It's always, they're very quick to take you down versus trying to climb back up. I'm not aware of specific districts. I know it happened through the Commonwealth, but there were some that were adversely affected. I thought tooth and nail, to Meredith's point, you know, one of the big things they always bring up is the budget, the use of fund bounce. Going through historically, you know, we really play in the, how we've been moving in a positive trend, as far as how much use of fund bounce versus, you know, we go through it every year when we talk about the budget. You know, we would need, in my opinion, significant state funding to increase it. I still try to make the argument every year that we've done this, which is the third year in a row. And I thought this year, we had them close. The rating agency, the analyst, was very happy with the call. But, you know, we did get a little bit more funding this year from the state. Our state budget did go up. The fact that it was level funded the year before was nerve-wracking when we did the rating before. If the state continues to increase it, I think we can continue to make a stronger case than we ever have before. We're not there yet, you know? Although it's great that we did get additional funds this year, I hope it continues in that direction so that we can really have an equitable distribution of funds from the state. And if that does happen, it will lead into a better, a stronger budget, which would hopefully lead to an increased rating in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, President Brown. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Why don't we, if there's no other questions, I don't see any, why don't we roll into the rest of the agenda items?
Sure. So next up is the conversation around the board policies for meetings. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Des Noiers.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. So the, thank you. This is the, the Board would like to review and think about updating policies that govern our meetings. And under the school code, the Board needs to have this discussion publicly. So the, there are, the reason for this discussion now is that a number of practices have been implemented during the pandemic, such as allowing community members to phone in and email in comments. And the, some of these practices, the Board could very reasonably want to continue. So we will, we'll go through the policy language and decide whether or not the Board would like to make updates. So thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. So the, we will first have a quick overview of how this presentation will go. We'll look at the policies that are potentially impacted. We'll look at current policy summaries and then recommendations, and then we will circle back through and give the chance, give the Board the chance, Board members the chance to weigh in on what they would like to see in terms of policy. So as I mentioned, the reasons we might want to review policies are implement new practices or allow for new practices, allow the Board to discuss how it would like to run our meetings, and ensure that policies reflect best practices for running meetings. So the, as Mr. Rogers stated when he went over the agenda, the five policies are Policy 003 Functions, Policy 005 Organization, Policy 006 Meetings, Policy 006.1 Attendance at Meetings via Electronic Communication, and Policy 903, Public Participation at Board So Policy 003 lays out the four basic authorities that the Board has, or four means the Board has, to accomplish change. Policy 005 lays out the items the Board may or must do at meetings over the course of a year. Policy 006 lays out requirements for the major types of meetings. Policy 006.1 governs participation in board meetings virtually by board members, and Policy 903 governs public participation at board meetings. So the Board can think about updating, making a change to the legislative authority and the executive authority, and include language that says the success of the board superintendent relationship is based on clear communication. And as far as evaluation of board procedures, we can consider adding language that requires policies to be reviewed by the Board on some timeline. Under the Officers section, we could consider including basically the job responsibilities of the Board Secretary in the policy. Policy 006, the policy currently specifies that O. Garfield Jones is the parliamentary authority under which the Board operates. This could be either changed to Roberts' rules or eliminated entirely. Under Policies 006, for a quorum, we could adopt language basically stating that no board member can be considered part of a quorum until they have sworn the oath of office and been seated as a school director. Next up, we could consider adding a type, clarifying the fact that meetings of the Board are official meetings, so make that a meeting type and say that all official meetings have certain characteristics. We could include that. Next slide, please. The, as far as regular meetings go, the requirement for regular meetings is that they take place at a specific location, and the question is, does that fit with virtual, if a virtual, if an entirely virtual meeting needs to take place, does having the word "place" in there make sense? Under the section for public participation, residents, taxpayers, and school district association presidents are allowed to speak. We could ask ourselves, do we need to include school district association presidents? And then we can consider limiting, adding language that can limit public participation if necessary. Moving on to the voting section, we can consider roll call voting for all board members participating via electronic communication. The next item, item number 2.0, is simply language cleanup. Next slide, please. Policy 006 continued, we could consider adding language that lays out when school directors are required to abstain from voting. That is in the school code, but it's not in policy. For executive or closed sessions of the Board, we can consider adding language that is now allowed under state law for school boards to meet in executive session to discuss matters related to school safety. Next slide, please. And Policy 006.1, attendance at meetings via electronic communication really doesn't allow for mostly or completely virtual meetings, so this needs significant updating. And Policy 903... And policy 903, uh, currently doesn't allow, it currently requires members of the community to be physically present if they wish to speak at a, uh, board meeting. And, uh, this doesn't allow for, uh, virtual meetings when the public can't attend, is not allowed to attend. So, having gone through that, if I could ask you to go back to the, uh, go back to slide five? Actually, I apologize, slide seven, recommendations. And the, um, the items I mentioned, the board can consider changing. I have a list and I'll just, um, walk through and, and, uh, in places, the recommendations are laid out on the slide. And in other places, I will make a recommendation and the, the board can feel free to, um, board members can feel free to, uh, discuss. So the first item, policy 003 under legislative, um, this is language that would essentially allow the emergency adoption of policies for the current board meeting. This seems like it's, I, I don't feel a strong need for this language. But if the board wished to, uh, go forward with that, we could. Any, um, any thoughts on that?
I just have a question if, whether, um, we sort of implicitly have this power already and this is a desire to state it more explicitly or do we need?
Um, we, we, uh, I believe our solicitor can weigh in, but I, I believe we have this, um, power implicitly, but this would just say, put out there in the policy that said that, you know, the ability, it would put in the policy for the public to see that, yes, this power is inherent in the board. We, we decide how we run our meetings and this, tonight's discussion is part of that.
And that's absolutely the case. I'm sorry if I needed to be recognized first. But, uh, so this is Kyle Burman, um, and I will simply indicate that the board always has the power to establish and change policies, um, and change the way that it's going to be adopting policies and to change essentially anything that it does by policy, it can make a decision to do something in a different fashion. That being said, it is worthwhile in some respect to indicate to the public the parameters in which you will generally operate and take action. So while you may have this authority implicitly and, uh, if you were to look through the school code, it's actually explicitly, um, it doesn't hurt to have such language in your policy as well so that if somebody is concerned about what you could or couldn't be doing at a given meeting, that they could understand your, um, the, the extent to which you can go.
I mean, based on that explanation, it sounds like it's, it's, it's a good thing to add it just for clarity's sake, if nothing else.
So the, uh, the community would have something, if, if we chose to invoke that, the community would, if anyone, if any community member so wanted, they could.
Have input and opinion.
They, they could see it there. Yes, this is appropriate for the board to do. Um, under, uh, executive, um, we can, um.
Director Disnoyers?
Yes.
May I, um, I do have an additional question for, um, our solicitor. The approval of two-thirds of the board membership, um, would that be those that are present or should we change that to just the majority of board membership? Because if we had a situation where three members were out, you know, we still have a quorum, but we wouldn't have the two-thirds necessary to make a change in policy if needed.
Okay, so that is up to you. The idea of using towards a board membership, um, is intended to make it so that it's difficult to do. So, I mean, in that respect, it is meant to mean that you'd need six board members voting for it. And that's, but that's not, there are some instances in the school code that require that you have two-thirds of board membership to vote for something. Policy is not one of them.
I personally favor the six board member requirement for this because emergency implementation of a policy is such a drastic step.
I agree with you, Neil.
I agree, Neil. This is Gina Curry. I agree as well.
Thank you for, um, explaining that, Kyle.
Uh, under, um, executive function of the board, um, we could make it explicit, um, that the board evaluates the superintendent, um, on the implementation of board policies. Is that something we'd like to do? I'm not hearing a strong desire for that, so I'll put that down as a no.
Question, I'm sorry, this is, um, Gina Curry. So where that's concerned, would that be like, um, just to give an example for the public, like the health and safety plan for, um, the pandemic?
Well, that would be, um, hmm, so the, the, one significant area or one significant way the board, um, can exert its influence is by, um, adopting policies. And it is the superintendent with assistance from administration and staff that has the responsibility of, um, implementing those policies day to day. And so, um, the, the superintendent is evaluated by the board following the, the, following a process that is governed by the school code or, or PDE regulations, correct? So this would, this would not change anything about the superintendent's annual evaluation. It would just add a note to the policy that says, you know, um, the board, you know, um, should recognize that by adopting policy, it is, um, directing how the superintendent operates the school district.
To Meredith's point from earlier, I think it's implicitly understood that we are holding the superintendent accountable for, um, implementing the policies that we enact.
I agree.
I don't know if we need to call it out as a, like it's a separate entity other than the criteria by which we evaluate him. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, I lean that way also, so.
I believe, I believe Ms. Mitchell has a question or comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, what, I, I do have a, just a question about this executive paragraph two about the superintendent evaluation. Mr. Disnoyers, did you, are you implying that this is in the Wallingford-Swarthmore school district policies or is this something that you think we should be considering?
It is, uh, it is in the Wallingford-Swarthmore policy and, um, I included it because it is a, if we added this language, it would, it would be further explanation of the, um, superintendent's responsibilities, um, delegated by the board.
Okay, I, I think it's already implicit in our evaluation process of the superintendent, which is quite extensive. So I, I would not be in favor of adding this at this time for our policy.
Okay, thank you. We can also consider adding the, um, effective communication language essentially, uh, explicitly stating that, um, for the board and the superintendent to work best together, uh, there has to be effective communication on, on both sides or all sides.
Now that I agree with, Mr. Disnoyer, sorry to speak out of turn, Mrs. Mitchell.
I, I also, I also agree with it, thank you.
Yeah, and this is, uh, Director Donna, I, that, that makes sense.
Thank you. Um, the, um, last item on this page, valuation of board procedures, we could consider adding language that policies must be reviewed by the board on a certain interval. I put down four years because that's a reasonably common interval. I think I would like to see that this considered in the future, but I, I don't think we're at the point, um, where it should be implemented now.
And, uh, Director Disnoyers, this is in reference to only policies in 000, local board procedures, not policies overall, correct?
This would be all policies? So that's why commit, for the board to commit to reviewing policies on any type of basis is a big ask.
Yeah, I would agree because there are a lot of policies. You know, I, I, I would, I would have the board consider possibly just evaluating, um, the local board procedure, zero, section 000, um, at least every four years to make sure that we are staying up to date with, uh, what's current and, uh, what the needs are of our community and, and how they receive information.
Okay, thank you.
This, uh, Director Fields, I, I, I would support that as well, the local policies every four years, have a good review by the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next slide, please. For the section on officers, um, Wallingford-Swarthmore has the, the actual, the, the job responsibilities of the board secretary in their policy. We could consider adding this. I would have to imagine, uh, perhaps our board secretary or our solicitor can confirm that the, the duties of the, um, board secretary are probably very well laid out in the school code or, um, other regulations. This would just put them in policy.
Director Disnoyers, could we get, uh, Ms. Curry's comment in? She asked some minutes ago.
Oh.
I no longer have a comment.
Thank you, sorry. There's a lot of moving parts to this and I'm, I'm not in practice.
I mean, I, I don't have an issue with it, but, uh, you know, are there other positions that we need to add other than the secretary?
Perhaps our solicitor can give in, some insight on the, um, the, the wisdom of, um, including something like this?
I actually don't have any input one way or the other. If you choose to put it in, you certainly can have it there, uh, so that the members of the public that might be looking through your policy might know what the different positions do, what the different officers do. At the same time, there really is no requirement to do it since this is language that's almost directly from the school code.
Okay.
And my own view on language from the school code is it has a place and that is in the school code.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So, um, I was not making a strong recommendation to include this language and I think the, uh, the board secretary knows his responsibilities very well and executes them very well. So I, um, I recommend leaving the language out.
I would agree with that, Director Disnoyers. This is, uh, Director Neil.
Under parliamentary authority, so our policy 006, um, currently states that meetings will be governed by, um, O. Garfield Jones parliamentary authority. And, um, O. Garfield Jones is essentially a, um, summary of Robert's Rules. It hasn't been updated in a few years. And, um, it is meant, it is published as a, um, as a means of allowing someone running a meeting to be able to quickly look up the appropriate Robert's Rules, um, item. So, I feel it, it doesn't really have a place in our procedures. If we want to specify a parliamentary authority to govern our, to, to, um, govern our meetings, I recommend Robert's Rules. The other option would be to strike any reference to parliamentary authority altogether. Gina?
Um, I think I'm in favor of the Robert's Rule order. I don't think we should strike it.
Okay.
I think it should be a part of it.
Any other comments?
Mr. Neil has a, Director Neil has a comment.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah, I think, uh, Ms. Mitchell, I think you had a comment regarding 006, which is what we're currently on. Did you want to speak now?
Sure, I just wanted to say that I agree with change in Robert's Rules of Order. It should have been done a while ago. So I'm in agreement with that.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Um, yeah, I, I would also agree, that was my comment. I don't think we should remove it. I, I think we should have some governance on how, um, our meetings are operated.
Thank you. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so, um, the section for a quorum, um, the, there must be a quorum of the board to hold a meeting at which official business is conducted. This is language that says, oh, a board member can't be considered, um, towards meeting the quorum if they have not, uh, sworn to the oath of office and been properly seated as a school director. I feel this is somewhat, um, unnecessary, so I would not, uh, I am not pushing for it. Any thoughts?
Yeah, um, Director Disnoyers, this is Director Neil, yeah, I, um, I mean, just because a, an individual can't participate until, you know, they do take the oath, but is, is this, I mean, this is, uh, in our, um, members, is it the membership, uh, in 004, membership or how we take the oath? I forget.
Yeah, there, there is a.
Yeah, how, how we. Yeah, how, how we fill in vacancies, so I'm not sure if this is needed for 006. But like, are you saying, like, if we had only four school board directors, we technically don't have a quorum? Are you saying that we would need? I, I'm not sure when we would use this language, yeah.
A, a school board member essentially is not a school board member until they have been properly sworn in as governed by, as Director Neal stated, Policy 004. And our solicitor is, has a comment, I would like to call on him.
All right, so first of all, this is likely only ever going to come up at reorganization, or it could potentially come up at, when the board member, when there's a vacancy and the board member is being selected. So you'd never actually, in, in a vacancy situation, you're never going to have a situation where you have less than a quorum without that member, because to be able to fill a vacancy, you need a majority of all sitting board members to have voted for that person to begin with. Second of all, as far as at reorganization, the way that this normally comes up is that, to be quite frank, this is something that is meant to warn board members that you're not going to be seated until after you've had the oath. So there, you know, for instance, this coming December, since there is a, an election that's going to take place in November, there are certain board members whose terms will have ended at the beginning of that meeting. So they will not be sitting board members until they have retaken the oath of office. There are some boards where the board members apparently don't realize that they're not supposed to at that point be sitting at the table, they're not taking part in the meeting until after they have subscribed to the oath, which can be administered there at the meeting, but there's still this step that's involved before they're part of the board, again. So it, it's not necessarily that this is a monumental issue, but it is something that needs to be understood by board members that they don't actually, they're not serving as board members until they've resubscribed to the oath. I see that there is a question for me?
Yes, Kyle, either.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you, Kyle. For board members, like even when we interview them and we elect someone that night, we normally have them take the oath immediately before they're seated, so I think we're covered in our normal procedures. Am I mistaken? Am I not, am I correct in that?
You're ab, you're absolutely correct. So if you have the, if the board members that are filling a vacancy were to immediately subscribe to the oath, they are then immediately seated. There are instances where there is not, for instance, a notary present, in which case the board member cannot subscribe to the oath that evening, you know, either a notary present or somebody else who is permitted to give the oath. Keep in mind that the oath that is often administered by the, even the sitting president or somebody else in that respect, somebody else is presiding, doesn't actually have the ability to administer the oath, except at the reorganizational meeting, when the temporary president is given that power. So, there shouldn't be an issue that would come up, but I just want to make sure that this, it's understood, this is really not something that is meant to be a, an impediment to a board member taking their seat. It simply points out that there is a requirement to have the oath before they get seated.
Thank you, Kyle. So, there is a very good understanding in this current board of this requirement, and as President, Board President Brown commented, it's in our procedures, so I go back to, Ms. Currie has a comment?
Yes, Mr. Desnoyers, can you please move the mic a little bit closer? I just, I'm afraid that the public won't be able to hear.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, just have your voice, you know, really go into the mic, thank you.
I'll try to speak up, too.
Thank you.
The next item is...
Before we move on, I believe Meredith had a question, and then I also did.
Go ahead, Mr. Neal, my question was covered.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry, Director Hig. In, in reference to this quorum passage, would this be better suited for Policy 3? I'm sorry, Policy 4 in the membership, instead of meeting the quorum? And this might be a question for Kyle, whether or not the policy would better have this passage in Policy 4.
Policy 4, it, this language could go there, but it's, I, I believe it is, it's laid out in Policy 4 that board members take an oath of office, and the, the oath is, is now, the oath that is taken is actually now attached to Policy 4, so I, I don't think it's needed there either.
If you were to add the, this language to Policy 006, the way that it is, the way that it belongs here is to essentially indicate that the, that the board has to, or it reinforces that the board operates as a group, not as individual members, and it simply helps to outline that the, the people who are going to then be counted as part of that group are the ones that take the oath. But again, I'm not taking a position on whether or not this is appropriate language for either policy.
Director Desnoyers?
Yes.
This is Director Fields. Before we go on, was anybody at this point have a comment or a question or discussion that has been raised or addressed? Anybody on the board? That's what I'm looking for, and I'm checking the chat as well as anybody in the room. This is, continue, and I will try and, as they come in, I will probably interrupt you and acknowledge, so that we can acknowledge some of the questions and comments that are coming up.
That is, that is excellent, thank you, Director Fields.
Right.
Next item is, do we want to declare that meetings of the board where action can be taken are official meetings, and official meetings have certain characteristics? It is fairly widely known that our meetings follow, our meetings are structured in a certain way and follow a, a general format, so I don't feel a strong need to, to include this language.
Director Desnoyers, I do have a question for Kyle. As an official meeting, are executive sessions considered an official meeting? I noticed that it wasn't written in this blurb here.
Yeah, so executive sessions are official meetings, they're not public meetings, but they are official.
Okay, yeah, my concern with this paragraph is executive sessions aren't listed, and then the, the following sentence says, "All official meetings of the school board shall be open meetings," and that's, and that is not true for an executive session. We do go over the general agenda of those meetings, but they are not open. I believe, Ms. Currie, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I was also looking at the language under the official meetings, and it says that it's limited to, but they aren't limited to business meetings. The business meetings, are they equivalent to a legislative meeting?
Business meetings are meetings where the board can take action, so we could, if, if we didn't like the, the terminology official meetings, we could use different language that would specifically, specifically meant to say a meeting, a meeting of board members held, an open meeting of board members held where action can take place, meaning official deliberations can take place and the board can vote on taking action. We could refer to those as business meetings, for instance, and that would, that would get around Director Neal's concern about not including executive sessions.
Okay, all right, thank you. I was just wondering if it was, had to be specified, the type of meetings that we have. So, you know, we have the committee meeting that we're having tonight, we have legislative meetings, and if there are special meetings called, if they had to be specified at that time, but it sounds like that if we say official meetings, that'll cover everything.
It does with the, so, it does, the, hmm, the possible confusion is that executive sessions are official meetings, so I would, I would prefer to leave this out.
Can I just help? I mean, that's part of my comment, I was going to say, you can simply say, "All official meetings with the exception of executive sessions of the school board shall be open meetings." Then, then that's covered, if you just add that piece, that it...
Okay.
Will take care of it, so that there's no confusion with executive sessions. It is an official meeting, but it's not a public meeting, so adding that blurb, I think, will take care of it.
Okay, thank you. Under regular meetings, the policy currently has a, a, has language that says meetings occur at a place. If we wish to, if, if an all virtual meeting is held, in order to allow for an all virtual meeting to be held, should we say the place or mode of meeting, for instance?
Yeah, Director Desnoyers, I think in terms of the word place, I, I think that could be interpreted as, as virtual as well. So, I, I don't know if we need to include the mode of, of the meeting, but I would suggest to the board to consider whether we want to continue live, actually, this would fall under public participation, I apologize, I'll hold off on that.
Okay, thank you. Under public participation, the, the policy currently specifies that residents, taxpayers, and school district association presidents can speak, and I have two items about this. First, I would like to ask the, our solicitor if school district association president is in the school code, and it, then my question for the board is, if it is not in the school code, do we want to remove this language?
So, I can answer the question about the school code piece. First of all, I don't think you mean the school code, because none of these pieces about public meetings, or almost none of them are from the school code, they're from the Sunshine Act.
Ah, thank you.
And the Sunshine Act does not say anything about school district association presidents, they simply, it, it's simply their states that residents and taxpayers have to be given, and it is their privilege to speak at public meetings of the board. As far as whether or not to keep that in, I will point out, and I, I don't know the answer to this, but the one other place that might be a source of where this language comes from, or this requirement comes from, could be the collective bargaining agreement, where you might have given or bargained for the ability for the association presidents to speak. I don't know if it's there, but I just want to make sure that it's not there before you choose to remove it.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was thinking that school district association presidents were something to do with, essentially parents or, you know, the, the band boosters or the, you know, some similar entity like that. I was not thinking of the president of the Upper Darby Educational Association, or something like that.
That, that is my understanding of what's meant by this, but maybe I was mistaken.
Director Desnoyers, Meredith, Director Hig has a, has a comment.
That was, so my understanding was also that this was referring to the collective bargaining units, and I certainly, I certainly wouldn't want one of our union presidents to be unable to speak at the meetings, simply because they live in, you know, Haver Town or Springfield or something, they live a town over. These people play a really important role in our, in our community, and I certainly would want, I personally would want to hear from those people at our meetings, so maybe we just need clarification.
Okay, thank you. Then, yes, it was, I, I should say that I, I very much support the, the ability of our union presidents to speak at our, in front of the board.
I have a question for the board. I mean, I would like to actually open it up for any employee to be able to address the board. I, I don't know what you guys think, but I'll just kind of open it up, yeah.
I would, I would not be in favor of that. I think that many of our school district employees are represented by unions, and through that, they, they have, through those bodies, they have means by which they can influence their working conditions, and they can, they, they essentially have a voice in front of the board, and I would, I think that, I am perfectly happy to have union presidents speak, but I'm, it, it, it could, hmm, allowing any employee to speak could lengthen board meetings considerably.
Yeah, Director Desnoyers, so like, not all employees of the district are union members, so they wouldn't have the opportunity if they did not live in the, the district. I know there are some question comments on this, so I would hand it over to Director Currie.
I would like to give the mic to Dr. McGary, thanks.
You know, I appreciate the, the, the process of involving union leadership. We, that came up several years ago, and we did change the policy to allow union presidents to do that, to be an advocate and to discuss it. I understand Mr. Neal's comments and questions. There, there are processes and procedures for voices to be heard in the district. We have instruction and curriculum meetings where union representation... instruction and curriculum meetings where union representation, not just presidents, participate. We have meet and discuss meetings. We have district meetings. There's also a process whereby if there is a member of the organization who feels that they would like to have a public hearing or public discussion, instead of a private, they can request that if they wanted to have that, that take place. So I think keeping it to the union presidents makes, makes the most sense. But I'm not, just a suggestion.
So I was thinking that I can recall times when there were some very supportive staff members who would want to get up to the mic and in support of what the district was doing. And so I understand that, you know, the, the teachers and staff, they're critical to us operating here. And so I'm just wondering if there were spaces like that, like Dr. McGary stated, if it would have to be included in the policy, or at those times, how it could be organized so that those voices could also be heard and not felt like they were muted?
Employees who are residents of the district are very, under the current policy, are very welcome to and have spoken at meetings. And I think there are things the board can do to obtain input and feedback from employees, both on an informal and formal, both in informal and formal ways. And I think this board does a reasonable job at that. And I, I, sorry, I, I don't, I just don't support allowing any employee on a whim to stand up and, and speak at a board meeting. All right. Next up, voting. Is there any interest on the board in implementing a, is there any interest in the board in implementing a rule that school directors participating electronically vote by roll call vote?
I think Director Rachel has a comment.
I actually think this is a very good idea, especially, you know, I happen to be participating virtually tonight. I sort of would like to know that my fellow board members actually voted on something. So I, I think this is a good addition to our policy.
I agree with Director Rachel, with Director Mitchell on this one.
Yeah, I would agree too. Now, I, I don't, would, would we have two separate votes, then? You have a, a vote of the in-person and then a vote of the virtual participants?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think there's any other comments, if you want to continue.
I have one, Mr. Fields. I'm just not typing fast enough. I'm sorry. So isn't that how we're-
Director Jita Curry has a comment.
Thank you. Isn't that how we're currently operating? I'm so, okay, never mind. I, I, I was thinking about the virtual in terms of how it's working currently.
Okay. This would be when a motion is made and has to be voted on, those of us around the table would say yes or no. And then the secretary, the board secretary would poll the individual board members participating virtually.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll, we'll include that language. The next, the next item is just cleaning up the policy unless there's-
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
I have two things. Did we discuss the, the time limits one? And that's one question. And then the second one is just, there was a clarification that actually employees can ask questions at committee meetings, but they can't comment at board meetings. So we do have a way of sort of hearing from them.
Yes.
But it seems like maybe we missed the second thing under public participation?
Oh, sorry. That, the, the board, this is, the, the second item under public participation would be simply adding in a second place the fact that the board can limit public participation in order to make meetings effective. And that's already in policy 903, so I would not argue strongly for it.
I don't see any of the comments from the board, so you can continue.
Okay. The second item under voting I was mentioning is just cleaning up language. I am in favor of it. If there's strong opposition, it won't be included. Meaning the, we have, we have two policies that specifically, that, that are, are there solely to specify when purchases must go out for bid. So this item in this policy would, would be just, would just say for, for bid amounts, look at the specific bid requirement policies.
Disnoires, yeah, I don't see any comments from the board.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was just like Gina, I wasn't quick enough to type it in. So you're, you're recommending the underlying, taking it out, and then just referencing the policy numbers? I don't see the policy numbers listed in the new quote.
In the, in the presentation, the last sentence of this item says, policy 610 and 611 specify bid amounts required by law. So the revised language would just say bid amounts can be found, bid requirements can be found in policy 610 and 611.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide, please. This, we, the board can add language, add explicit language that states when school directors are required to abstain from voting. It is something that board members must already follow, but we could put it in the policy so that, again, interested community members could see it. And I recommend the addition of this language. Okay. And I'm gonna, we already discussed the next item, the place of the meeting. So I'm going to move to executive session. The, the, a new, relatively new reason the board may hold an executive session is to discuss items related to school safety. I would like to put this in the policy so that, again, any interested community members can see it. Okay, we're closing in on the end. Policy 006.1, attendance at meetings via electronic participation. So this policy does not currently allow mostly or completely virtual meetings and needs to be rewritten to allow such. If any, if any board member has any comments on something they would like to see in this policy, I can, I'd be happy to record it and, and put it in the draft version of the policy. Otherwise, Director Neal and I can work with our solicitor and revise the policy.
Director Disnoires, Director Neal has a comment.
My comment is regard, so in here, there are some changes to make for gender inclusive language. Also, it does say that a majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications. I, I would like to change that where it, it doesn't matter whether a majority of the board members are present, physically present. I, I don't know what the other opinions are on the board, but I did want to open that up to a discussion. I know we do have to submit to the board president prior to the board meeting, that we would need to be participating virtually and the reason for that. So, you know, I, I would, that would, that would kind of hinder our ability if a majority of people could not make a meeting physically due to illnesses or whatnot.
I would actually like to take this opportunity to ask our solicitor if he can give us a couple examples of language that school districts have, have adopted recently since the pandemic. Or are there any features of electronic meetings, virtual meetings, or there any, have any best practices been established?
Well, okay, so your request as far as since the pandemic began is, the answer is no. I think that everybody so far is putting into place stopgap measures that are meant to simply get them through the pandemic, where people are coming up with all sorts of ad hoc rules. The, the reason that I had originally pointed you towards the Longford Swarthmore policies was mostly because they had decided at the beginning of the pandemic actually to address this. So the, the policy that you're looking at, that was, or that you looked at, that was 006.1, one that went through large revisions. Now, I will also say that PSBA has created a policy 006.1 that is different than that. And as a matter of fact, there are, there are districts that my firm represents that have all come up with different versions as well. So I will say that there is not any one uniform way that this has been done. I would say that the, the version of the policy that you have in place right now is really meant as a disincentive to participation remotely, or it's, or more to the point, is meant to make the virtual participation a rarity, where it's possible that what the board is looking to do here in Upper Darby is actually make it so that it is more feasible for board members to do it. I don't know what the answer to that is. And I think that's something that really is a, a basic foundational policy issue that you have to decide whether or not you want your board members to be able to participate remotely or not.
Okay. So I strongly recommend we allow board members to participate virtually. And I strongly recommend that we allow, if necessary, a majority of board members to participate virtually.
Director Disnoires, Vice President Curry has a, has a question, comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. I was really thinking about how we're operating through the pandemic. The side of the majority of board members not being present, what we, once we open up the, the room to the public again bothers me, I must say.
Okay.
I do think that it's a consideration that we should have the ability to do, we're, we're community members. And so, you know, we, there are things that do come up where we don't want to miss meetings, but might have to because of travel for work or having a sick child at home, these types of things, where in the past, we would have to miss completely. That would mean missing a vote. That would mean missing opportunities to have comments. So I do agree with the option of attending virtually, but as far as the majority, I feel like once the public is allowed back in, you know, once we're inviting the public back in, it would be a little awkward if the majority of the public was in, in the audience, you know, in the room, and there were only two board members or something like that. I don't know. That's just my thought. Thank you.
So we could add language that the, the expectation is that board members would be physically present, except in unusual circumstances.
I'm not sure, and Mr. Berman, I'm not sure how that would play out in the policy because there are sensitive matters that could come up, you know. But I don't know how we should actually write that. I just, I, I stand on the fact that, you know, we should have more board members in than out.
Directors, David Neal and President Brown have questions and comments. David Neal's first.
Thank you, Director Field. My comment is regarding the, I, I, I do feel that there could be a perfect storm. And, you know, where we have five members not present due to various reasons. And, you know, they do have to go through the president of the board in those cases. So I, I feel there would be some measures in place that would enable, you know, people to participate still. But my, that will also go back to Gina's point, when the, the public is then back into the, the building during these meetings. Public participation, will the board continue to allow emailed comments, phoned in comments to be read during those public meetings? Or will we go back to only in person? Now, I am for transparency. I am for more public engagement and the opportunity to do such. As, as Vice President Curry mentioned, some of us can't make the meeting due to various reasons. And that's the same for the public. They cannot make the meetings for various reasons, but they still have a say and they still should be heard. So would the board consider allowing public participation moving forward to allow the continuation of emailed comments or phoned in comments?
Director Neal, I was actually going to discuss that under policy 90, 903, the next item for discussion. So once we conclude our, our discussion of policy 006 and how to allow for board members to attend virtually, we were going to move on to policy 903, which specifically governs public participation. Thank you.
All right. So keep that in the back of your heads. I'm not going to say it again. So you already have my comment. Thank you, Director Disnoires.
Board President Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Fields. So I think about how we operated during most of the pandemic when I think, you know, the superintendent and key administrators were in the room along with myself and maybe one other board member. And I think we was able to conduct business. So when the public comes back, you know, I'm envisioning- So when the public comes back, you know, I'm envisioning that that would still be a successful model where they would still be able to, to, you know, the public would be in the meetings, and if it was just, you know, me, you know, maybe another board member, the vice president perhaps, or another board member, I still think that we would be able to conduct, because that's how we conducted it so far, and I don't think having the public in the room would be an intrusion or have an inability for us to conduct business. The main thing is to give them the best of all possible worlds where they can engage, you know, and I think we should, you know, and we're going to get to it in a minute, but, you know, we want to give them the ability to participate in, in their presence, you know, here in the room or via phone message or, or email, and that gives them whatever, you know, whatever, that gives them all of the options that they need in order to participate. And sometimes life gets in the way for us, as you alluded to, but, you know, we would still be able to conduct business. So that's my thing. I think we should be able to do it virtually even without a majority of board members in the room and still have the public here to participate.
Okay.
Director DeSnoyers, Director Mitchell has a question, comment.
For, as far as Policy 006.1, I, I would just be an advocate for adding that the majority of board members could attend the board meeting virtually in the case of a declared emergency. I, I, I agree with Director Curry where the majority of the board members should be present in the room. That's what we, we ran for when we were elected. We, we, we come into this knowing full well what our responsibilities are. So I would just be an advocate for just adding the word emergency to that policy for emergency situations so that we don't have to do that voting thing in the beginning of the meeting that are, they are virtual. We all know that we do not know the future of what the pandemic holds for us. It seems to be, you know, a very, you know, keep going up the roller coaster and then down. So I, I would just advocate for the emergency.
Director Mitchell, that is an excellent point, and I fully agree. And so therefore I agree with Vice President Curry as well.
Director Worsavich has a comment, and then Director Neal.
Thank you so much. I just want to echo what other people have said in terms of it really being a reinforcing and comforting presence to, to encourage and require when most appropriate, a majority of the board members be physically present. And that just matches the approach that we're taking with our students and our families as we're re-inviting them back into what full in-person quote unquote instruction looks like. It matches what other responsible electeds are doing elsewhere, and I just want to make sure to remind the public that in our discussions of in-person versus virtual, they are not mutually exclusive. They're meant to work in tandem because these policies that we're discussing and things like that, it's not meant to hem what it is we are responsible for doing. It's meant to be an extra added level of encouragement to make sure that we are putting the best people in positions to succeed possible on behalf of the public. So I just wanted to, to clarify that.
Thank you for your comment, Director Worsavich. It's great to hear from you.
Director Neal.
Thank you, Director Fields. My comment is in response to Director Mitchell's comment about the emergencies. Now currently in Pennsylvania, there is not a declared emergency. So as a, as of this point, we would need a majority of board members to be present. Now, in my opinion, the state legislature have, has now made the declared emergencies a political emergency. So you could have, depending on the party in power, a different interpretation of what would meet the criteria of a declared emergency. So we could have board members that feel it is a true emergency, they do not feel comfortable being in person at a board meeting where a majority of board members do feel in that way. So the declared emergency, in my opinion, needs to be evaluated and discussed and actually defined if we were to use that terminology.
Director Neal, I believe for the coming year, we passed a resolution that the, the board passed a resolution that the school board, I may need some help on this, the school board declared that we're operating under an emergency that allowed for certain things. Sorry, I'm not remembering the resolution, and maybe our board secretary or solicitor can help us with this. Director Hag, help me with it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So there was a resolution that stated whereas the World Health Organization has declared the current outbreak of COVID-19 a global pandemic, and whereas Pennsylvania Department of Education has determined the COVID pandemic constitutes an emergency and so forth. If we could, that was, that was at the board meeting two weeks ago, we, we adopted that resolution. So declared emergency is a, the declared emergency language that Director Mitchell used, yes, is, is open to some interpretation, but clearly for the board to adopt a resolution declaring an emergency in the district, that's, I think, a pretty major step and not one that the board would take lightly. So that, I think if we just use the language declared emergency, we, I, I fully support the language Ms. Mitchell used stating declared emergency. I think Kyle, sorry, our solicitor has, has maybe a comment. Perhaps Mr. Berman can clarify the, the resolution that we passed two weeks ago.
Yeah, so the resolution that you passed two weeks ago was actually authorized by the Department of Education under Section 520.1 of the school code, which allowed you under those circumstances to indicate that there is an emergency, or more to the point, to recognize that there is an emergency and, and act on that under those circumstances. So you absolutely cannot decide on your own that there is an emergency, but you can, you can take action as permitted by the, by the school code. And the school code does permit you also to, to have certain things that are, that are otherwise present. So like, I believe that I-20.1 includes snowy roads and other things that would prevent you from keeping the, the school open, which is a different issue than what we're talking about here.
Mr. Berman, thank you very much for the clarification. I, I didn't obviously remember exactly what the resolution was we passed, and I appreciate the, the clarification, but I, I will go back to the fact that a declared emergency is a pretty substantial step for a government agency to take, and that echoing Vice President Curry's and Director Mitchell's comments, that the board, board members serve at the pleasure of the community, and the best way for the community to see and hear that we are doing our jobs is if we are physically present. Okay, if we can move on to Policy 903, the last three items. I strongly recommend continuing to allow community members to make public comment via email and telephone. Does anyone, does any director wish to comment or wish to suggest otherwise?
There are no comments.
I think Director Hag has a comment.
So as of right now, we have certain time constraints on the comments. So for voting meetings, if it's a general comment, it has to come in before the meeting. If it's a comment on a specific report, it has to come in before the end of the report, and I think both of those make a lot of sense. The committee meetings currently, if, I mean, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, allow for commenting at any time. I just, we've had, we've had moments where there's sort of been, you know, people sort of commenting multiple times, which I, I guess we've already addressed. I just, it's so very easy to sit at home and just keep typing comments and typing comments, and, and I, again, I completely understand that we have, we do have measures in place that, that limit an individual to three minutes. I just, I do worry a little bit that, I, I want to encourage participation very much, but I worry that if we have a contentious issue and someone sent, decides that they're going to keep commenting, oh wait, they can't keep commenting, okay, they're going to tell their friend to comment, and they're going to tell that friend to comment, and that friend doesn't have to do anything. So I just wonder whether there should be a few more time constraints on the committee meetings. It's just a thought.
So that, I, I, I was going to bring that concern up by saying, do the requirements, do, do the authorities given to the board in Policy 903 need to be amended to consider situations when there is a lack of decorum in emailed and telephoned comments? So essentially, we'll consider the first two items under Policy 903 in the presentation together as one, or rather the, all three as one. I don't, I don't have any particular suggestions for this, and I'd be happy to research and provide possible language for the board if the board would, now, I, before I say this, I should say, our, our community has taken advantage, has, has, has strongly supported by their participation, the emailed and phoned in comments, and they have to date, the community has submitted them overwhelmingly respectfully and such, but, but it has crossed my mind that essentially for contentious issues, could this be an issue? And there are, there are specifics laid out in this policy for a community member who is physically present in a meeting. I would be happy to research and provide sample language for the board to consider lack of decorum issues for emailed and phoned in comments.
Director Neal has a comment.
Thank you, Director Fields. Yeah, Director DeSnoyers, so we could also include public comment via telephone and email into the record without actually reading those at the, you know, we have public comment from those physically present. So we could allow public comment, public participation through those modes, but not actually read them during our meeting. They would be provided to the board to review before and during the meeting, so especially if it's a voting meeting that we have those resident, resident comments. That could be a compromise between both.
Thank you, Director Neal, for that suggestion, and I would propose language that says if emailed and phoned in comments are excessive in nature, they will not be read and will be instead put straight in the record. And I see some heads nodding. And that then concludes this presentation and discussion. So when the agenda items are reviewed, I will ask Mr. Rogers to simply poll the board as to whether we should move forward amending the, revising the policies as discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Director DeSnoyers. Mr. Rogers, if there's, continue with the rest of the agenda items, please.
Sure. Next up is the policy review for, which will require board action for Policy 805 and 805.2, which went through the first reading at the July board meeting. And at this time, I'll hand it over to Mr. DeSnoyers.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. There are no changes to these policies other than the, the changes that were posted for the first reading two weeks ago. The summary of changes is posted to board docs. Thank you.
At this time, we can move to public comment.
Mr. Fields.
Are there, are there any, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you, Ms. Beaufort. Are there, I think we're done with comments. Mr. Rogers?
So in review, the first agenda item was the 2021 bond issuance update, which is informational. We discussed the finalized 2021 bond issuance and the positive impact it will have for financial savings and also the ability to continue our capital plan. The second item was board policy around meetings, and will require board action. As Mr. DeSnoyers stated, he'd like to hear from the board if they would like to move forward with the policy changes that were discussed this evening.
So, all in favor?
Yeah, do I need a motion?
So move. This is Director Worsavich.
We don't, we don't.
I, I don't think we need a motion. I think it's just an agreement of whether or not we want to move forward.
That's correct.
And Mr. DeSnoyers?
Is anyone opposed to moving forward?
Well, I mean, we want to, I guess you're going to have to give us a review of the ones, because, you know, we went through a lot of policies, and some things we agreed to, some things we didn't, so I don't know if you could briefly or quickly give us a summary of the things that we agreed to.
Sure.
I have a question. I apologize, everybody, I just, I want to make sure I allow the, the conversation to continue, but would, would it make sense that this comes forward in a first reading? And that at that point in time, at the first reading, the board can discuss that instead of a review tonight? You, you can, these comments can come forward in a first reading, the discussion happens there.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett, I like that idea. Does everybody concur with that?
Yes, I totally agree.
Yes.
All right.
So the final item was, or policies from the July meeting for first reading that require board action. As Mr. DeSnoyers described, there were no changes from the first reading, and the policies are 805, emergency preparedness, and 805.2, school security personnel. Would the board like to move these forward for a second reading?
Yes.
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 That concludes our agenda for the evening.
Okay, Mr. Fields, I'll take over from here. A motion is in order, well, first, thank you, Mr. Fields, for taking us through that meeting, and Mr. DeSnoyers, thank you for that, taking you through the policies and explaining them the way you did, and really appreciate that. You do a good job with that. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Meeting adjourned. We will take five before we start the Education and People Services. Thank you. Welcome back, and thank you for your patience. We will now begin the Education and People Services Committee virtual meeting. All board members are still accounted for and present. I will now turn over the Education and People Services Committee agenda to co-chair, Vice President Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Good evening. We will be starting the Education and People Services Committee meeting. I'm going to hand it over to Christine, and if you could please read the agenda items. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll begin the agenda with a review of the comprehensive plan, which will require board action. The second item will review the 2122 calendar. We'll review two calendars, one being the one-page calendar, which will require some revisions. And the second calendar will be the professional development calendar for the 2122 school year. They will both require board action this evening. The third item is the high school course planned instruction that will require board action as well. We have three courses that Mrs. Canio will describe to us any changes that had to occur there as a result of the high school scheduling changes. The fourth item is an cloud-based keyboarding program for our elementary students, which will require board action as well. The fifth item is the reopening of schools, which would require potential board action, which we will describe some of the latest guidelines and the instructional models for our school district. And then we'll end with our district policies that just went through a first reading in June.
Ms. Curry, can I make a recommendation along with Ms. Kelly? I didn't get a chance to talk to Christine about this yet, but perhaps we can move item five to number one tonight, given it's eight o'clock, and there are probably parents who are participating tonight, have to get their kids to bed. And so if we can move that up to five, Ms. Curry, and Ms. Mitchell, and Board President Brown, and Christine, that would probably be, be best.
I concur.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll begin with item number five, the reopening of schools. Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno, and Dr. McGarry will be presenting the, some CDC guidance that we're receiving, as well as the instructional models for the school district for the 2122 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, and good evening, everyone. As Ms. Kelly mentioned, Dr. Manfree, Dr. McGarry, and I are going to review some of the options that the administration has been considering as we look ahead to the reopening of schools for this coming school year. Next slide, please. We're going to review five different instructional model options that we have taken into consideration as we look ahead to the start of this school year. The first of which is probably the easiest, and it is the in-person only option. So this option indicates that we are, we were obviously going through the entire spectrum of, of models to consider. This option would not include a virtual option. This is just in-person learning only. So our students would be going back well before the pre-pandemic situation of, of having at least a, an asynchronous option. This option would not allow for any virtual options, synchronously or asynchronously. We would only offer in-person learning for all students. And again, this would be completely different than where we were even prior to the pandemic, and not give our families and our students really any option other than in-person learning. Next slide, please. Option two would take us back to where we were prior to the beginning of the pandemic. So this would be an in-person and a virtual option, but that virtual option would only be asynchronous. Again, it's the same as what we were offering to families prior to the pandemic, and the, the families would only have that asynchronous option as, other than just the in-person option. Next slide, please. Dr. Manfree?
Thank you, Mr. Salerno, and, and this is where things get a little bit more complicated. I'll be presenting to the board and to the public this evening both option three and option four. The, the option that you see in front of you here provides families with the opportunity to participate in all three instructional models. However, we'd be asking families to make a full-year commitment to the, to the option that they select, whether it be in-person, virtual synchronous, or virtual asynchronous. In this option, teachers will be responsible to deliver one defined instructional model at the elementary level, and at the secondary level, teachers may be teaching in-person and synchronous students, but not at the same time. In other words, there would be in-person sections or classes and synchronous sections or classes.
Can I ask, can I ask a favor? Can we please update? This is not, the, the presentation that's in board docs is the one, not, not this one that we sent. So those, those slides are different.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry. I didn't, I didn't notice that.
We shared with the, I uploaded the board docs. Yeah. And, and.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry, and my apologies to the board and to the public, but I will pick up, try to pick up where I left off with option three being an opportunity for our families and our students to participate in any of the three instructional models that we have to offer here in Upper Hurby School District, whether that's virtual synchronous, virtual asynchronous, or in-person. In this option, however, to reiterate, we'd be asking our families to commit to a full year of one of those instructional models. In this option, teachers will be responsible to deliver one defined instructional model, specifically at the elementary level. And at the secondary level, teachers may be teaching in-person and synchronous students, but not at the same time. In other words, there would be in-person sections and synchronous sections of those classes. This option also has to take into consideration seat availability for new registrants. These seats may be limited at the home school under this option, and therefore would require a change to Policy 206, which is assignment within district. This change would essentially enable the administration to decide which elementary school or which middle school at the secondary level a student would attend if an in-person, depending on an in-person request and seat availability. Could we go onto the next slide, please? Option four is essentially very similar to option three, but we would be asking for a commitment of less time. This option will require a commitment of a marking period or a semester. This option would also require board action, and that board action would be changing Policy 206 again. But potentially, this option creates a much more volatile situation when synchronous students want to return to in-person instruction. Again, this would create an issue with seat availability and class size, and make the decision of the administration a difficult one in terms of seats available to students and where those students would, would be going. It may potentially not be their home school, which is why we would be asking for a change to Policy 206 in both option three and four. In addition, if, at the high school level, if there were not enough students at the high school level who were requesting synchronous instruction or asynchronous instruction, for that matter, for a given course, we would not be able to, to run that course virtually, and those students would either need to take a different course or come in for that course, come in-person for that course. Or in-person for that course, correct?
May not run in-person.
May not. In, in addition, as Dr. McGarry points out, even prior to these instructional models being presented, if, if an in-person course does not have enough, a minimum class size as indicated in the Course Selection Guide, then that, that course in-person may not run either. So it goes both ways. Next slide, please. Again, this, as I mentioned, would require a policy change, and again, this would be one defined instructional model at the elementary level and one defined instructional level, instructional model, excuse me, per class or per section at the secondary level. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McGarry for option five.
Just before I review option five, just want to say to Frank and Greg and the team, there's been a considerable amount of effort trying to meet with the requests coming out of the pandemic. We've met with the teachers' union several times. I know Mrs. Buford, myself, Frank, and Greg, and Christine have met with many various different parent groups. We've met with the district home and school as, as most recent as this Monday night. We've reviewed these options with the district home and school. Mr. Warsaw was present for that meeting. And we understand from board members, from teachers, from parents, that in the midst of the pandemic, there was this concern of what can you do so that students are either in-person and learning in-person and not having different instructional models? And so we, as we said, we promised that we would, I should be careful using the word "promise," but we, we said that we would investigate all this information, and the team put a lot of time and effort into it. One of the key caveats to, to our district in getting valuable information is just access and survey results. So we did put out a survey prior to the most recent information I'm hearing about today, even prior to this meeting, about masking and updates. And in the previous survey we put out, it was, look, we want to know from you if you're going to commit to in-person learning or synchronous virtual learning next if you're going to commit to in-person learning or synchronous virtual learning next school year. Please fill out the survey. At that time, we didn't, we hadn't anticipated, maybe wrongfully so, that we'd be maybe looking at going back into a school year where we're going to have to have everybody masked, whether you're vaccinated or not. We know that masking of students has been a deterrent for some families, that they don't want to have their students in school being masked at all times. Social distancing is coming back up again. So either way, what I'm trying to say here is that there needs to be flexibility still in the school district. And so we want to really provide people that's out there, because we've heard from all the parents, well, Dr. McGary, make it so that it's either in-person or nothing at all. And I don't think the public fully understands in today's environment. You can't make it in-person only or nothing at all, because it actually, in some ways, prevents access, prevents opportunities for kids. And then we are competing. We're in a, we're in a market where we're competing with other types of instructional models, and there could potentially be a budgetary impact if we don't offer different access and opportunities for families. The other caveat is teacher, substitute teachers sickness. Let's say we roll in the next fall and there are teachers who are testing positive, but they're not showing that they're sick, but they still have to quarantine without substitute teachers, without somebody being in the classroom. We want kids to be able to come in school. We should have that teacher remotely come into the classroom so that the instruction can continue. We've got to be creative about keeping instruction happening and do everything we can to not have it shut down. And I think the technology, if we do it the right way with these options, will allow us to run schools so that the instruction is interrupted as minimally as possible. That's really what we're talking about. And so as we go through the each of these options, really administratively, option one is not an administrative recommendation. We don't recommend option one, but the board has the right to say, Dr. McGary, good luck. We want option one. The public might think that option one is the way to go. Option two was what we had pre-pandemic. Option, option two was we offered only asynchronous, because we didn't have the technology to do instruction virtually or live-stream students into the classroom. We didn't have one-on-one computers. We didn't have hotspots for kids. And now we do, because we were, we received federal dollars. This board made a committed investment in that. We put millions of dollars into infrastructure, into technology. And to say that we're going to go away from that now would be kind of a bad idea administratively as a superintendent. So option two, not really a recommendation for the administration, but it's there for you to review. So we wanted to show the people that it's something you could say you want to do. Option three or four are similar. They, they provide an opportunity to try to make a synchronous instructional teacher. But as Greg discussed and as Frank discussed previously, that comes with some serious discussion points. Does this administration, does this board want to be in a situation as people move in and out of these models? Because we all know, as we get through August, if this continues to be what it appears to be, that the variant is becoming troublesome and parents get more trepidation. It was clear Monday night in our home and school meeting, parents do want their kids to wear a mask, at least the parents that were on the call, 12 and under. Other parents who've been emailing me and the board are angry that I would even consider masking. So here we are again, who's going to come into school and who's not going to come into school? Will come down and will be on the superintendent of schools to make these decisions. And so now we're thinking, okay, how are we going to make you commit to this? Because as a parent, you might change by October. You might change. It might go down. You might want to put your kid back into school. But if I'm making a virtual-only teacher, Frank and Greg are actually, making a virtual-only teacher, and they pull that teacher from Stonehurst, that teacher is going to be, have to be overseen by some administrator, could have students as the third-grade synchronous teacher from all over the district. And if five kids want to go back to one home school and the seat count is already at 28 or 29, and another seat count is at 14 and 15 in another school, it would be wrong for us to send that kid just back to their home school to increase that class size and not back to a school where the class size is more reasonable to balance that caseload for those teachers. And so by making a virtual-only teacher, it requires us to make the other decisions, because we can't legally say to a parent, you've got to commit to the whole year. We really can't say to someone legally, you've got to commit to a semester. We're hoping that someone who picks that would give us at least a break to make adjustments, to find availability to do that. But when you go to make a virtual-only teacher, you do a couple of things. You are essentially taking a kid out of their home school, their neighborhood school. We have to consider who's going to be overseeing the student who struggles, who may not be attending, whose parents need help, who's the principal that's going to oversee the 25 kids that are coming from all different schools in that scenario. And so we, we, could we do it? Of course. Are there pros and cons to it? Absolutely. Which leads me to option five, a twofold option five, which is what I would like to recommend, which is we continue to grow as a school district, recognizing that in a learning environment of today, teachers are going to have to and administrators are going to have to adapt and learn to teaching more than one instructional model. So here's what we're talking about. Teachers will be responsible in the 2122 school year for in-person students and synchronous students in two instructional models. We've budgeted this year for asynchronous work to be a stipend asynchronous program that we've provided previously. It's about a million and a half dollars. You heard us talk about through the budget season. We'd like to see that fade in the next budget season as a break to taxpayers potentially going into next, into the next year. High school synchronous and asynchronous, as Dr. Manfree talked about. The higher you go up in education, it becomes more complicated. If you want to provide elective courses, you've got to be careful about who's going to be in those classes and who's not based on synchronous, asynchronous. And we've talked to the teachers and we've talked to the teachers' union about, look, let's be honest. You really don't want to fight against this, because it could be a class running and a class not running. And you might want to say, I'm okay with having 10 virtual students and 15 in-person, because otherwise the class won't run at 12 only in-person students. And then where kids are losing out. And so in discussing this as recently as today, they agree that that they would want the class to run and that growing through the pandemic, there are more teachers who feel more comfortable than not, elementary school being the one area that we really have to work on more so than anything, encouraging students to come into school. And by the way, I want to be clear, we want students to come into school. That's our priority. But we recognize until we get through this, there will be parents and students who opt for safety until there's a vaccination for 12 and under, and then we'll see more kids come into play. So at the high school, it's much more complicated, but we do believe that we can make the right kind of requirements. As you know, we passed a course catalog recently that also talks about what courses would run virtually, what courses were run in person. The high school administration worked on that with Dr. Manfree and Mrs. Kelly. I reviewed it. The high school teachers had a chance to look at that. So we're trying to create these right pathways for this to occur. Asynchronous instruction, as I said, you can go back to this slide, I'm sorry, would would remain the way that it is pre-pandemic, with the exception that we no longer have Pearson, which was about a $200,000 savings in this, in this year's budget. We're going to schoology, because we use the federal dollars to rewrite curriculum to move to what we originally wanted to do five or six years ago, and we happened to get there faster, which is our own curriculum in schoology taught by our teachers. And that would happen for the 2122 school year, right? We're going to use this year as another year of development to get us to learn how to do all three instructional models with a classroom teacher, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But again, the positive option five is all the students are assigned to their home school. There would be no worry about, you know, I've started the year virtually, but I want to go back to my home school, but my home school has seats that are full, because a teacher was taken from there, and now where do I go to school, right? That could be a potential concern, that while everybody right now might be saying it's okay, come October or November, it could be more significant. And we also know that November, October and November is finally when our enrollment actually starts to level out. We really don't know our true enrollment numbers until that period of time, because we're so transient. Next slide, please. Going into the 2223 school year, we would move to all three instructional models. Concept would be, let's say, at a high school, the class size averages 28 to 30 students in a class size, right? Once the year starts that way, you have your class size. If I feel that I'm a stronger teacher teaching a more instructional models, we would try to put the various instructional models in your classroom. If you feel that you're best only with two, we would try to make it that you're teaching synchronous and in-person, vice versa, and we would do this secondary level with, 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 with teachers. We would not exceed a certain class size, historical class sizes. And then if students transition to the school district beyond the year, and that would put class sizes above a certain amount, and they would be asynchronous only, then we would stipend teachers to pick up those asynchronous students beyond the regular school day, because that would be above and beyond what they're normally doing. And when possible, we would still try to create in-person and synchronous-only opportunities when the enrollment and course request for those classes, in particular, allowed that to happen. Or at the elementary school level, if the numbers worked out the right way, there may be only one homeroom, that's a synchronous homeroom, or maybe only three, two of the four sections where there's a mix of those students, based on what we've talked to with the teachers' union, teachers feeling that they do enjoy that and they're stronger in that area. We would also leave that up to the building principals and teachers to have that strength. Again, the positive in option five is that students remain in their home school with their principal, attending their home school activities, being able to move in and out of their home school. Why is option five also important for us? We're going to be having to navigate the pandemic again, it's clear, in the fall. And we want to make sure that we are able to cover teachers that are out. If students or a family member has to stay home with a student, because that student has to quarantine, which we still don't know what the contact tracing rules are yet. We don't know what the quarantine rules are going to be. It could be 14 days. You may be able to test out a quarantine next year. We don't know. But we want to have as minimal interruption to student learning for the students, but also for our teachers. And so we've got to be clear about how we can be best navigating a lack of teachers, substitute teacher issues, students who might decide to feel a more confident and comfortable coming in in November. I really didn't mean to be committed to virtual learning all throughout the year, for the first half of the year. And this allows us to make much more quicker decisions with students and their families than the other options would. To be clear, we are not going to allow students without a reason, a sickness or a parent request with the principal to flex in like, Monday, I don't feel like coming into school today. I'm going to stay home. That will not be allowed going into next school year until we really get better at these types of things. We're going to also put much more strict parameters into synchronous learning, which was a feedback that we got from other parents. It was feedback that we got from the teachers' union. If you're a synchronous student, your camera is on. You have to, we're going to teach you how to put a backdrop behind you. You've got to be engaged on time. So we want to make sure that this is not a situation where people are trying to take a more relaxed approach to their instruction and that our attitude towards synchronous and asynchronous will increase our expectations, and it won't be a way to kind of have a school avoidance that some parents were concerned about and teachers were concerned about. So our administrative recommendation is for option five. You can go to the next slide, appreciate it. And these are the reasons why. There's been an infusion of federal dollars to rewrite curriculum, train staff and purchase new technologies. It provides students and families with more flexibility and access, especially in their home school. And really, another caveat that even in speaking with the district home and school, by the way, I told them I would say this, those who attended the district home and school meeting actually liked option five, which is, which is good to hear, that we talk about, we talk about the way that we all learned. I learned when I was a child. Some of you learned when you were a child. I shared an example that when I was a, a kid in a parochial school, that we spent 30 minutes using the blackboards wrapping around us, taking just notes. And then the person took a nap and we had to memorize those notes. It wasn't really the type of learning of today. And so while some of us like to write and take notes, like I do, kids of today are learning differently. And so they're going to be expected to learn in different instructional platforms and work in different instructional platforms. They're going to have to learn to log into meetings now, virtually. They're going to have to learn to set that timeframe and do those things. And so there is a learning curve that could become a benefit from this educational model. Is it perfect for everybody? Absolutely not. And we're offering in-person learning to everybody, and we still think that's the best way to go. But to say that students can't learn in a virtual environment is not necessarily true any longer. And I think we might be doing our students a disservice, those of us who teach college or adjunct. There are still courses going into next school year that are going to be virtual for kids. So we need to prepare our kids for what the future could be in different instructional models. And we think that this, not only college, but their careers, it continues to lend itself to that, to that area. We are strongly encouraging elementary school students to attend. We still, still feel kindergarten, first and second grade, that's an area that you really should be in person as much as possible. But we feel that this option provides the most flexibility with, with, with the least amount of stress. At this time, we're looking at, you know, in total, about 383, close to 400 high school students that want, that we've heard from, that we know of, want to learn in some kind of virtual learning format. They don't want to intend, attend in person next year. So imagine what 400 students means to try to schedule the high school and try to make those courses work with all those different instructional models that are there. Middle school, I think it's around a little bit over 200 so far that we've heard from that would like to still remain virtual. And at the elementary school, Frank, I think it's a similar number, around 200 students?
Yes, 188.
188 elementary students. And we believe that as we get through the summer, because we don't believe for a second that everybody is really fully 100% responded to our surveys, that there's a potential with this latest guidance that's coming out, that we may see more families opt for this instructional model. And I want to be clear tonight that we would still encourage students to come in for in-person instruction. We think that's the best choice. But we believe that, that there's the potential that we're going to be required to wear masks, vaccinated or not, again, in the, in the school year. And that social distancing is being discussed again. And then if this variant continues to increase, if we don't do the mitigating factors that are being recommended, we don't know what the fall could hold for us. And this model probably provides us with the best, the best flexibility. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we covered our, all of this. And we're open to do whatever model you would like or the public would like, but we want to make our recommendation clear. Frank and Greg, anything you want to?
Thank you, Dr. McGary. And I believe that, that Dr. Hague had a comment.
Dr. McGary answered my question.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
Oh, sorry. I did have just another question. Dr. McGary, I think you said that in your discussions with the, with the teachers' union that there's, they're okay with this? Did I hear you? So this, as, as a teacher, it makes me a little bit nervous. I will say, you know, a year and a half into this, I would be, I'm much more capable of teaching students in-person and asynchronously now. I mean, if you'd asked me two years ago to do that, I would have thought you were insane. And now I, I could manage it, but I wouldn't be enthusiastic about it. So I guess I'm curious a little bit more about what you're hearing about that, because it does make me a little bit nervous.
You might not like my total answer, but I'm going to give it to you. As a superintendent of schools, it's become a competitive market. And so my objective here is to make sure that our budget is appropriate, and we believe we give the best education to the students that we serve. So not exploring this reality has a significant financial impact, one way or another, on what we're doing here as an organization. So if we pick option one or option two, we could be in trouble. If we try to pick option three and four and literally sustain that long-term, there's a, there's a considerable financial cost in adding teachers to be only specific teachers of one instructional model. And then they become a little bit removed from their own neighborhood schools, which is, which is another barrier to what we're trying to do as a school district community. So when we presented this to the teachers' union, clearly at the elementary level, there was much more trepidation and still currently a lot more trepidation with different instructional models, because it's hard to keep kindergartners, first graders, second graders engaged virtually. We agree. So we're encouraging families to come in in person. Reality is, prior to the pandemic, we had a decent number of families who were opting for virtual kindergarten, first, second, third and grade learning anyway. And so what we got to was an understanding, though, that there are teachers who feel tremendously comfortable with this. And so from the teachers' union perspective, can there be some flexibility that among the teachers, those who feel most comfortable, work with this instructional model and discuss who takes on this responsibility versus who doesn't? We agree, we of course would work on that. And where possible, we would still try to make one instructional teacher versus the other. The reality is financially sustaining that in this market is, it's not a reality. It's not a reality for us to try to sustain that. We have to do all that we can to give all of our kids the option. As we get older with our students, there seems to be less trepidation with teachers teaching in older grades. And what I heard most recently today was, look, are there still some teachers that are concerned about this? Absolutely. Our job for the next school year is to at least try to take one model, the asynchronous model, directly off their plate, run it the way that we did pre-pandemic and during the pandemic, and provide more training and development and encourage kids to come into school. At the high school level, we run the risk of potentially cutting certain classes and electives by not making this a reality. So what I wanted to really be careful as I explored this is, when you get to the high school and kids are opting for in-person or virtual or asynchronous, you then have a situation where there's some kids that want to be there and some kids that don't, and you can't split that teacher in half. And I certainly can't come to the board and try to hire 10 more teachers out of nowhere to run a class size of 10 or 11, when I have to get reading teachers at the elementary school, or Highland Park has 28 kids in a class at the elementary school level. So my responsibilities are to try to create the best, most realistic model and pace it out over time and learn and grow. What I was happy to hear, most recently today, from union representation, not all of them, I offered today, and we will meet with elementary teachers, middle school teachers and high school teachers, and share if, depending on what model is approved, talk to them about our game plan as well. But we did meet with union leadership today, and I was happy to hear from them that, that they felt like they've improved, and there are many of them who actually welcome some kids in person and some kids at home. Are there going to be some teachers who feel like this isn't their strength? Absolutely. It's our job to try to work with them, provide them training and make them as comfortable as we can, at the same time encouraging kids to come back to school. Option one would be the way to go. But I didn't vote for creating the other instructional model options. Some legislator decided to say cyber schools and charter. Some legislator decided to say cyber schools and charter schools can do it their way. And as a result, that competitive market is dictating some of the direction we have to go in. So I know that was a long answer, you might not like all of it, but I want to be transparent with you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Are there any other questions from the board regarding this particular agenda item? I think we have a lot to think about if we want to move forward to the next agenda item. Thank you very much.
We're going to move to agenda item number one, which is an update on the comprehensive plan and will require board action. The comprehensive plan was presented during the June committee meeting and has been available to the public for the 28-day review period. And as a result, I would like to discuss just one recommendation before asking the board to move the 21 through 24, so 2021 through 2024 comprehensive plan forward to an August board vote. In the goal-setting part of the plan, we're recommending revising the four-year graduation cohort goal. This, this adjustment would include revising the interim targets, which would better align with the statewide average and the future-ready P A index 2030 goal of 92.4. So the P A future-ready index gives us a 2030 goal that we have to get to. If we align this goal better, we can use a year one as our first little step, year two as our second step, and year three to try to get as close to that measurable goal of 2030 as we possibly can. So that is our recommendation right now, and our only adjustment to the comp plan, if that's okay with the board. Our next step would then be to move the item forward at the conclusion of this meeting for an August board vote on August 10th, and then we would seek signatures and assurances and submit it to the state for formal approval. So are there any questions at this point on that small recommendation that we are making to the comp plan?
Dr. Haig has a question. Can you just clarify, just because I don't have the numbers in front of me, is that, is that, your recommendation is to make the targets more aggressive or less aggressive?
So the, the targets right now, so the statewide average is an 86.5, we are at an 82.8. So we wanted to make year one closer to the statewide average, make year two kind of go between the statewide and the 2030 average, and then get as close to that 92.4, which is the 2030 goal for year three. Does that make sense now? So incremental jumps to get to that 2030 target. And that's all available on the future-ready index, the, where we are, where the statewide average is right now, and where we are trying to get in 2030 with the future-ready index.
Okay, thank you. I know it's hard to see you.
I know, sir.
So are there any questions from, any other questions from board members at this time? Okay, seeing none, we can move forward to the next agenda item, please.
The next item is the 2122 calendar. First, I'm going to present a change to the one-page district calendar and then move into the professional development calendar. Both would require board action as we move forward into the August board meeting. So the first, the one and only change for the district one-page calendar would be the addition of schools and offices to be closed on June 20th for Juneteenth. So just recently, June 7, on June 17th of this year, Juneteenth was approved as a federal holiday. And as part of our school calendar, we would be in observance of that day on June 20th. So all schools and offices would be closed. Schools being our summer school or our summer academy programs could be running that day, and our offices would also be open. So we would be asking to close the schools and offices on June 20th for observance of Juneteenth. This does not affect the total school days in any way, it doesn't affect the total student days or teacher days in the calendar. It affects just any student that would be participating in our summer academy courses and then our offices. So I'm going to pause there for any questions before moving into the, the professional development calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Are there any other comments or questions from board members before we move forward?
I would like to make a comment. I know as one of the co-chairs of Education and People's Services, when we had our agenda setting meeting, I was excited that the, the district decided to observe Juneteenth, and of course, as a federal hable day. And just the fact that they, we were also observing it this year, even though, you know, with having the event on our, at the high school. And so I hope that this will be something that moves forward as, something that is observed with great pride. Thank you.
As I move forward into the professional development calendar for 2122, what I'd like to do is just give you a quick review on how many hours our teachers would get in our professional development calendar. So it's about, a total of about 62 and a half to about 64 total hours for the school year that they would have professional development. Full days, we have seven built into the calendar, which totals that 45. We have one contract and service day, which is in May, where those hours are done as early as July 1st, it's professional development done on their own time, and they log those days. We do have a menu of options that they can choose from, but they fulfill those hours in a, in a different way, rather than coming into the building to do those hours. So a little bit more flexibility, a little bit more ownership into what they want to learn. So that's one day, and that, we call that the contract and service day. We have our early dismissal days, which are eight days for elementary and middle school, and seven at the high school, which that's where you get that little bit of flexibility. The reason for the flexibility at the high school is because of final exams in January. So we total really 62 and a half hours to 64 hours for our teachers to learn new curriculum, to learn all the technology that we've been talking about, instructional models, all of those pieces, which I have here. We have divided the days into building-level planned days as well as curriculum-focused days. We use the building days, or the principals use the building days to support building initiatives and to do some mandatory trainings for the state testing and compliance training. Our curriculum-focused days involve our district initiatives, which is revolving around trauma-informed care, social and emotional learning, Naviance, and involves our technology and anything curriculum and instruction with new programs that we have right now. So we have all of these pieces to do in that limited amount of time of 62 and a half hours. But, you know, as we try to navigate the synchronous and asynchronous models, integrating the technology with using the cameras in the classroom, it boils down to not a lot of time. But we do our best to balance the curriculum needs as well as the building-level needs that we have throughout the school district. Dr. McGary, did you have something?
Yeah, Ms. Curry, if I can. Of the 62 and a half and 64 hours, how much of the hours, and you know, I think I know, we maybe want to break it out differently if the answer is correct, how many of these hours, if we remove, let me ask you the question this way. There are mandatory trainings, professional development trainings we have to give, 403B for staff, child abuse, bloodborne pathogens. How many of the 62 and a half to 64 hours are really not curriculum and instruction-related? Meaning, as a curriculum instruction director, you're really, when it's left, all this gets peeled out of all the mandated things that we have to do, how much time do you get to work with teachers on teaching?
I would say, so when you look at that mandatory, the P S S A's and Keystone training alone, that takes up about two to two and a half hours of that, easily. And at the high school, you have to do that twice, because they administer the Keystones in the spring, in the fall, excuse me, and then in the spring. So easily two to four hours right there. We have compliance training also, there are, there are bloodborne pathogens, there are 403Bs, there are anaphylactic shock, all of those compliance pieces that come into play, Title IX, take another four hours. So you're talking about eight hours right now removed from that. We then have other things that we have to do in the building to get ready for school. So we do provide a day for teachers to get ready, to set up their classroom, to feel comfortable walking into that learning environment. So that removes another six and a half hours from that. Not that that's not instructional, but when you talk about planning for just the instructional piece, learning new curriculum pieces like that, you're, you're taking away a good, you know, probably 14 hours right there.
Okay.
Does that answer, is that?
Yeah, I mean, previously when we did this, we were looking at, when it was all said and done, less than 25 hours that teachers had, when they were, we removed all the state mandated and other mandated practices and procedures, child abuse, everything else, it was under 25 hours. And best practices are, you need about 52 hours in, to learn one skill in one instructional hour, they're the best recommendations. So I just think to you and to the team, the supervisors, and Frank and Greg, what you're trying to do to get teachers to where they need to be, the board should know, as they're advocating for fair funding and everything else, every time a new rule is passed, we have to do the training and see it through. You know, we're also spending time training on nasal swabs and things that come up, it becomes our responsibility. So I want to be clear that there's not 64 hours of just learning how to be a math, first grade math teacher, that would be ideal. That's one of the other gaps in education, that when we make these mandates and they're unfunded, they're unfunded in another way, they're unfunded by a lack of training and time for people. No other real organization professionally gives their people something to take on and doesn't train them appropriately for it.
And as we're navigating especially new curriculum, you know, a best practice is always ongoing, so it's not just that one and done. And in a, in a calendar like this, and with limited amount of hours, that sometimes forces your hand into, you get a little bit here, and then it's, if you can attend an after-school thing, if you can do this, if you can do that, and that's unrealistic also. So are there any questions at this point on the, so what we are asking for tonight is the revision to that 2122 one-page calendar, which would include the Juneteenth on there, and then the approval of the 2122 professional development calendar, which would include the days that we just discussed.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Dr. McGary, I do appreciate what you just said about, you know, really having the amount of training hours, and Ms. Kelly so eloquently putting that out there. It is so important, and I think Board Director Neil has a question.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for your presentation. My question is in regards to, so far, that's, the date has not been announced for the primary election of 2022. I was recently speaking with a state representative, and they had mentioned that the primary might possibly be held during the summer. Are there any plans in place by the administration if it is included during the school year? What would we do with the children, would we turn that into a professional development day, or just a school closed day? And where would that day go to?
Right. So in the past, we have run into the same situation, that they announce the date later than the calendar has been planned. So we, we go through cabinet again and, you know, have that discussion of what, what can that day look like? Is it, is it a flexible instructional day now, because you have that flexibility, although it may not follow that guidance? Is it a total virtual day, because we have that flexibility, and you don't want to, you don't want to have to push graduation, because you know, when you start to put days into that calendar, then it has a ripple effect on the end of the school calendar as well? So we wait for that date, we always hope for it to come out prior to the calendar being passed, but it has been, I want to say, at least two or three times that we've revised the calendar as late as, I won't even say September and October, because of when the date is announced to us. So we have done it in the past, we can continue to look at what model we would use once the date is, get provided to us.
Okay, thank you for your answer. Yeah, and this is just in reference to the census, so the districts need to be redrawn in Pennsylvania, and I suspect that's not going to be happening with any expedited effort. So they think that the primary be held in during the summer months. But thank you, Ms. Kelly.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. And Ms. Kelly, did, was there anything else? I'm sorry. Okay, any other board members have any other comments? Okay, next board, next agenda item, please.
The next item is item number three, which is the high school planned instructional, or, sorry, high school course planned instruction that needs some revisions. So Mrs. Kenya is joining me this evening to discuss some of the recommended changes based on the high school newly approved schedule that was presented at a May committee meeting and approved in June. We're looking at revising three courses as a recommendation, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kenya to have this conversation with the board and the public.
Thank you, Ms. Kel, oops. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, and hello, everyone, good evening. We have three courses that are going to be, there's going to be a change to planned instruction. English IX would be the first. English IX Research and Writing is a full-year course for our freshmen at the high school. Students that take reading, because of the change in the high school, we are combining their English and reading class together during the live one-hour instruction, and they will take their English IX and Research and Writing curriculum asynchronously in the morning for 42 minutes. So let me say this again. A student that does not take reading will take English IX, Research and Writing, all year long for one hour. A student that needs a reading intervention will have reading for that hour and do their English IX asynchronously in the morning. In the one-hour reading time, the reading students will have their English teacher in the class and their reading teacher in the class, the class will be co-taught. Addressing standards, H M H into reading the program we're using at the high school actually covers all the standards needed for English, the Common Core standards. However, we want our students to have an equitable education as their peers, so they will cover, cover the same material as students that don't need reading asynchronously in the morning. Any questions about that? Yes?
Sorry. There's a little tweak to that. Students who make appropriate progress in one of the two read interventions will progress back to the other flipped model, because we believe that by doing this model this way, students coming in for the Read 180 program and getting it for 60 minutes, where right now, pre-pandemic and pandemic, they were getting less time than the program required, that we would see tremendous growth from students, not, I don't want to quote you, but we would see growth, and that the chances of those students transitioning back to the other instructional model by the first of the year is a reality, so that we can flip the model back for these students, and they'll actually get more than they would normally get.
Thanks, Dr. McGary. I was going to explain that after the American Lit. The 10th grade students at Upper Darby High School take American Literature, a half-year course. The 10th grade students that need reading will take American Lit asynchronously in the morning, similar to the English IX students, and take a reading class live with their American Lit teacher and a reading teacher. As Dr. McGary pointed out, prior to this change in schedule, our reading students were only getting reading for 28 minutes a day, and that doesn't include transition in, transition out. By giving them one hour of live instruction, we have significantly increased the amount of instruction they're getting, and it is our hope that we can exit them out of the reading program quicker, as Dr. McGary said, and into a class with their peers without reading support, because they have exited the program. I just want to point out that we are using these programs in the middle school as well, and we are seeing great progress with our students. So as we move forward, the number of freshmen and sophomores that will need these programs, I'm very confident, I'm very, very confident those numbers will diminish. So that's how reading students will work in ninth and 10th grade, that's two big things. And then if you'll go to the next slide, I'll explain the music, and then I'll take any questions. So our music teachers are thrilled to know that they are going from 30-minute classes to 60-minute classes with the change for the classes listed there. As Ms. Bengliyan said, when I talked with her about how the instruction was going to change, going from 30 minutes to 60 minutes, she was like, oh my gosh, we're just going to do more. And that's really exactly what they are going to do. They're going to cover the same standards, they're going to be able to go in more depth, more engagement with the students. more engagement with the students, and teachers and students alike seem to be very, very excited about this. So that's it, unless anybody has some questions.
So also, just available on Board Doc, you'll find all the completed ARs for all of the details if you'd like to look those over as well.
Dr. Hag has a question.
I was just curious, in the current program or the past program, are the, were the reading students getting the sort of writing and literature component in some other way or not really, they were just in the reading course?
So prior to this, yes, the reading students were getting 30 minutes of a direct instruction and reading, but then they would still go to their block of English. The problem that we were seeing was because they needed that reading support, they weren't always successful in that English class. So in my mind, this is the best of two worlds.
Was, was the English class that they were, actually, so I'm curious, in both, in both cases, it sounds like in the new model, the, 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 sorry, I'm like blanking on what they're called. Okay, so for example, the research and writing course, they're in a research and writing course that is, that is entirely students who are also receiving reading support?
Correct.
Was that true before?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm excited. I think this sounds, sounds very encouraging, and it also, it makes me think of the trends in math also, where we're sort of doing a bit of like a corequisite model, which, which we sort of had before, but it sounds like a lot more support and a lot more sort of, having the teachers co-teach, I think that sounds, that sounds very exciting. I'll just also comment that, you know, I, so I'm not from around here. I'm from California, but I'm also from a school that also had a spectacular music program, and I had two hours of music every year from my sophomore year to my senior year, and it is entirely what got me through high school, and I'm so excited for our students because they're going to love it. I have not sang in 20 years, and I'm not going to do it right now. Maybe when the microphones are off.
Thank you, Dr. Hag. That's, that's awesome. So excited about the music and the reading. I mean, that's just incredible to be able to afford students that opportunity to have more instruction all around. And I know that Dr. Manfree has a comment. I also think that Dr. McGarry would like to say something.
I'm happy to defer to the superintendent. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kenya, could you, can you talk a little bit to the board and the public about the added benefit of the fact that Read 180 and System 44 calls for a certain amount of time during the day, and that we were only giving 30 minutes of that instruction prior to this change, and we've actually increased that to add more fidelity to those programs? Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, the actual model calls, well, it originally called for 90 minutes. HMH adjusted that down to 60. We modified it to 28, and we modified it more during the pandemic when we were virtual. So in a, in a true 60-minute model, which is what we are going to be doing in the fall, there will be whole-class instruction for 10 minutes. Then the students rotate to a three-pronged model. They spend 15 minutes in a self-adaptive computer-aided model. Then they go 15 minutes to independent reading, where they have a choice of Read 180 books, stories, or they may choose from their English reading during that independent reading, and then they have small group with the teacher. At the end of that, the five minutes, whole-class wrap-up, then the 60 minutes are used with fidelity.
And, and the fact that we were finding so much success at the middle school level, I think, is attributable to the fact that we were giving more time to those students for the reading. And I'm optimistic as well that we're going to have less and less ninth graders requiring reading. So this is, this is all really good stuff, I think, and I want to thank you for your hard work on this.
Surely.
I just, I just want to follow up to Dr. Hag's comments about the instructional components and the skill set in English class and the reading class, and you touched on a little bit there. I don't want any public to think, there are some school districts who use Read 180, as you call it, like a corequisite or like a prerequisite class, as the actual ninth-grade English class for the students. Because as, as Kathy Kenya, Ms. Kenya just described, they're reading literature in the Read 180 class. And so what we really want to do for the first half of this with these students is essentially say, look, let's take the Read 180 and the data that we're getting and the skill deficits, and ask you to, to do that other work and work on developing those skills in your English component until the reading skills catch up, and you can then focus in on, why are we going to make you read two or three novels at the same time? Instead of getting really good at dissecting a piece of literature, a short story, based on the skills that you're developing in the program, and then work on some of the writing skills that you've learned as well. And that's the concept that we're here, we're making sure that we're not trying to overwhelm students by giving them less of the skill development, and then saying, go ahead and swim in the deep end of the pool without having learned to do that yet. So I'm excited by focusing on skill development. There's this idea in high schools that you have to read 50 or 60 books or all these great plays, when the reality is, you have to learn how to approach the literature to really appreciate it. And I think we get caught up in covering a lot versus getting really good at it. And I think we're really focusing in on giving those, those kids the skills to attack their biology, their chemistry, their math, and not just the English courses. And that's the baton that has to be passed by an English teacher. So this is going to be exciting to see this, to see this take off, and we should, you know, provide an update at some point in time, see how many kids have progressed out of it.
That's a great idea, Dr. McGarry. Mrs. Mitchell has a comment.
Thank you. You said that so eloquently, Dr. McGarry. I was going to add that as well, that it would be great to get an update. I think as we continue to look at our schedule, you know, across K to 12, and we're looking at specifically intervention programs, you know, this is a drum that I beat all the time, that we, we have to deliver the programs with fidelity. That's where we're going to see these improvements, and those improvements are going to benefit our students. And I know sometimes we want to, you know, figure out how to do that while we look at the whole child. And so if we just continue to make these changes where we are focusing on the students' needs and delivering the programs with fidelity, we are going to see a lot of excellence in the Upper Darby School District. So thank you so much for these changes.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Not to dump a load, Ms. Kenya, but I'm thinking about the fact that this sounds so exciting, and actually thinking about middle schoolers. I was actually having a conversation today about my middle schooler and how, how math is going to get so exciting for her in middle school. Like, I'm super excited about that, with Mr. Des Neuer's being in the math club, and I'm excited that the light bulb is going to come on, and she's going to really be excited about math. So I'm thinking, wow, you know, thinking and hearing about this extension through the high school programming, just curious about middle school.
So at this time, we have not combined reading and ELA at the middle school, but we, we just instituted Read 180 and System 44 in the middle school, actually, System 44 in September during a pandemic, and Read 180 in January during a pandemic. And despite all that, these teachers are so passionate about these programs because they're seeing results. We put systems into place, the kids are excited because they're seeing their fellow students advance out of the program and then move into an elective class. So having these systems in place and this excitement, teachers and students, is like building this buzz in the middle school, like we can get out of here, we can, we can do it. And despite all the hardships this year, we sent 75 less children from eighth grade to ninth that needed reading intervention, which I think speaks to how hard the teachers and the students worked this year. So I don't, I don't know the direct answer to your question, Ms. Kerry. I hope we never have to have it. I hope that we get these kids moved out of these interventions, and it's a discussion we don't need to have in the future.
Just, just that point, though, that years ago, and I think Mr. Brown used to come to these board meetings at the time, and Ms. Mitchell was on, on the board, but when we moved to the middle school schedule, there was this great conflict of elective opportunities versus the supports, and there was this great debate of, you know, before they changed the tests and they changed the SPP to ESAE and all this nonsense that we have now, the combination, in a way, what we learned by combining the high school classes, it allowed kids to take their elective still. Because if we, if we made the reading class an elective, kids lost out on an elective. And so imagine being a student who is struggling in reading and you can't go to a course that's exciting to you, right? Like a business course, or a tech course, or an art class, because you have to go to a reading class. And so one of the considerations, not that I want to put this out there tonight, as we get, as we start to look and fine-tune scheduling and the technology and the resources, there is something to, I want you to feel good about what you're good at, your strength, and then give you the skills that you need and then not take it away from you. So there could be a conversation too at the middle school where, if we look at doing a similar model, you don't keep a kid out of an elective, because right now at the middle school, some students do not get to go to that exciting elective if they need reading help. And so it's a conversation that we really need to continue to explore, because you don't want to turn kids off to school, and it's not necessarily, it's not their fault that they have this gap. And how can we catch them up and keep them excited by school? Not all of us were excited to go to their English classes like I was as a kid. Some really thrive in going to the woodshop or going to their music classes, there are classes, like my little brother went to art school. So we need to think about those things, too. It's a consideration that, you're right, we want to see them grow, but at the same time, if we can combine some of this the right way, we could free them up to be excited about an elective, too. And that's something to think about.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGarry. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Kenya, for doing such a wonderful job explaining this intervention program.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, please.
So item number four is a cloud-based keyboarding program type to learn. So Ms. Kerry, I think about a year ago, almost to the day, to the date, we were talking about the keyboarding skills that our elementary students have or do not have, and that we really need to look at some different programs. So Mrs. O'Neal has been working hard to figure out what, what would be the best program to implement for, not kindergarten, sorry, elementary students, and how our, how our elementary schools could use this program and where it would fit into our schedule. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. O'Neal, who's been doing a ton of homework on keyboarding right now, who's very excited.
I'm very, I'm always excited. So yes, I am proposing, and you can go right to the next slide, and to the next slide. Sorry about that. So I am proposing that we implement Type to Learn as our keyboarding program in kindergarten through fifth grade. It is aligned to our ELA standards, which actually the standards start in third grade, but we are proposing that we begin with our kindergarten students because in our world where they are constantly using the computer, they're learning really bad habits if we don't teach them the proper way in the beginning. That's exactly what it looks like. So, so we are proposing that we do it from K to five, so that we're teaching them posture and key placement and all of the right habits before we have to undo everything by the time they get to third grade. And now that we've reached our goal of one-to-one technology with all of our students, it's more important than ever that they are really going to know what they're doing, which is only going to help when they get into middle school and high school, anyway. To the next slide, the methodology for Type to Learn is, it's researched and scientifically based, but it's game-based. The kids are going to have a good time with it. It's, it's fun. And they are special agents, and they have to solve certain, you know, they have to like, basically save the world by typing, so, and maybe they can come and save our district. But, yeah, it's amazing. So it really is fun. It's a placement test. There are some pre-leссons for our little guys that are, really just to help them navigate what the keyboard is in general, but there is a placement test, and the program basically moves with the child. It starts them where they belong, it goes through 32 lessons for K to two, 34 lessons for the three to five band. It talks about transcribing and generating your own, responding to questions and things like that. So it goes through both, which is the transfer piece. And I'm, now that the kids have the one-to-one device, the hope would be that not only are they getting this instruction in this fun way, but then the teachers are also putting it out there that we should be typing more frequently within the content area, so that they would be doing it more than that, and their accuracy and their speed would increase that way as well. So individualized remediation, tons of practice, and the assessments that are built into the program are called challenges, and they don't move forward to the next piece until they have mastered the challenge, which is automaticity and accuracy. So that's good. The teachers can generate reports, they can see who's participating, how far they, how far they are, what their errors are. They can change the goals, so if it's not challenging enough, they can change the goal so that the child has more challenge, which is nice, and they can, you know, the program itself goes back and remediates for students that are struggling. So it does have some really good features. Now, the company, one of the reasons I chose the company is because they are so accommodating. And they are currently working with their integration team to make Type to Learn work with Class Link, because right now it didn't. So that was my, one of the things I was kind of weighing back and forth when we first did this, because it has to be on Class Link, I think, for our guys at this point. So by the end of September, early October, it's going to be solidified. So we would actually start this with the kids, probably the beginning of October, just so that they're not learning how to log on and then having to learn something else when we have our single sign-on. So it's going to be really, really easy by that point. So that was, that was good. You can go to the next one. So the company, we are, and Dan, I think, mentioned this last time when we presented about foundations, we're very much into train the trainer. Things are more thorough and more adaptable to what we need when we do it that way. I've already met with the company several times. They're going to train our core team to train, and it's very, 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 very simple. It's not much on anybody, truthfully. It's not much on the teachers or on the parents. We're going to train every, it's really, they log on and the system kind of does everything for them, other than the teachers really learning how to monitor and making sure that they're, the kids are actually working in there. So we, they did, I did ask them, I requested two support videos, which they have to create for us and are willing to do at no cost. So a support video for parents who are trying to help the kids at home, and a support video for teachers who are trying, you know, so we can actually add it to our professional development library, and teachers can go in and access the support video at any time. So they're going to work, probably waiting for this to be confirmed before they do it, but as soon as we give them the green light, they're going to go ahead and make, create those two videos. And there is free, it comes with the cost of the program, tech support. They prefer that it comes from the district, not from the parents, but we can support them, any, with any tech needs at all, they're going to support us on their end with that. So that, that was good. I meant to say this in the last slide, so I apologize, but we've been using some version of free typing programs with our library. You probably saw it this year with a lot of that asynchronous, it being asynchronous at home for part of, I guess, the previous year, and then the synchronous part this year. And we went back and forth on a bunch of different programs to land on, oh, I'm sorry, to land on Type to Learn. So because, because of the way our library curriculum is structured, in, for our, for our one-to-five students, the librarians would be the ones that introduced this the first time, made sure they could get on, that they were able to do their pre-test and everything like that. And for kindergarten students who don't go to library, that would happen in the classroom. And then for practicing, I mean, we're, we're identifying a need, it's aligned to a standard, so there has to be some accountability for the kids to do it in school and to practice at home. So the expectation would be that the kids would practice at least two times during the school day, which we could embed in the 90-minute ELA block as part of their rotation, and then that they could practice, this would be part of that asynchronous, I don't even know if that's the word anymore, homework, that they're going to be doing from this point forward, where they could truthfully practice five days a week if they wanted to, to increase their automaticity. So that is, and, and I guess the important part would be that it's $7,500, and that is a reoccurring cost. But that's it for me, unless anybody has any questions.
Wow, this is so awesome. I wish I could see you. That column is in the way. Thank you, Mrs. O'Neal. There you are. Thank you so much. I so appreciate the team for looking into this. I think that this is going to be great for all students, because we know our younger children know how to swipe up, and that doesn't really help when you're trying to take a test where you have to type. And so I really appreciate, and we have to type more with utilizing all of our fingers and not just our thumbs. And so I am so appreciative of the work that was put into getting this, to bringing this to the district, and the fact that you're starting it at the younger ages. It just makes my heart happy. So thank you so much. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say, if there isn't anything else, I want to thank Dr. Hag and Mr. Des Neuer's for joining the one and only Ivan Reed last night. It was awesome to have you on there. I think the kids loved it, and you read, so it was, it was awesome. I don't know if I'm allowed to do that, but I have to thank you.
My daughter made me promise that we're going to the rest of them, so you'll see me.
And I met Harper, and she was awesome, and she answered questions, so thank you. And I met Harper, and she was awesome, and she answered questions, so thank you.
Yeah, based on that, Mrs. O'Neal, the, the reading part has been great. And even the reading for the secondary, that particular book has been great too, so thank you for that as well. Any other comments? Okay, so we're moving on to our next agenda item. I think Mr.
Yep, our last, I'm sorry. Our last item is our policies for this month that have already gone through a first reading. And as we move to August, would go through a second reading for approval. There were updates in eight different policies listed here. Mr. Des Noiers, do you have anything to add to some of these changes?
So, two things. The policies, except for the attendance policy, the changes are driven by requirements that the school district implement threat assessment procedures and so forth. That resulted in two new policies, a threat assessment policy and the trauma-informed approach of policy. The trauma-informed approach policy, and modifications to other policies. The attendance policy has substantial changes. And that is, those are coming from changes that were implemented at the state level several years ago that are now taking effect. And those changes to the attendance policy are significant. And I urge board members and the community to read the changed policies and the summary of changes that is posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Des Noiers. I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly.
I just said thank you.
Okay. The inability to see your face, like it's, okay. So I appreciate that explanation, Mr. Des Noiers. And I, if there are no other comments from board members, I would like to just ask for a little bit more clarification on the attendance policy. I, I know that there's change to that policy. And I have a little bit of reservation where this is concerned. And just, I know that we're moving it forward. I would like to just have a little bit more clarification about what would happen to a student if they were out, I believe it's 10 days, when they come back in. So we know that a lot of our students in, in our district are, have family that are abroad. You can't necessarily take a plane ride over to some of the countries where our students are without being out of school for a certain amount of time. And so, I guess the biggest concern for me is, will there have to be re-registration? And I know that if students are gone for a certain amount of time, say that there's a sick family member or something where they have to go abroad or be out for a certain amount of time, where does that put the student in terms of their level, them coming back in? Say it's a couple of months, you know? Would they just start in as a new student? Like, these are just some of the questions that I have when looking at that particular policy. Thank you.
So, this is not easy. The, so what you're talking about is the 10-day requirement, I believe, that students who are absent for more than 10 days with, you know, either have to provide documentation of their continuing absence, or the parent unenrolls the student, and the recommendation is to enroll them in school wherever they are at that point. If the, if the district doesn't hear anything, and the parent doesn't unenroll, unenroll the student, the district is required to disenroll the student. And then when the student, if the student returns, then they have to re-register. And if enough time has passed, there need to be appropriate placement decisions made and so forth. So this really, uh, this is driven by the requirement that has been in place for, you know, some years, that districts keep track of where their students are. And this is where family needs and district needs differ.
Yeah, I would like Dr. McGary to speak to it as well. I, the reason why I bring this up is because there are so many needs of our families and students here in Upper Darby School District. We are not like other districts in so many fashions. I just want to make sure that we're being culturally sensitive, that we have all those pieces in mind. I know that it is very difficult on the side of the district. We have to maintain, you know, legalities in terms of the state requirements and things of that nature. Just, just have Dr., and I appreciate you, Mr. Des Noiers, I would like to hear from the administration just to see, you know, if the wording with this particular policy and how it could ebb and flow, if I may, with different circumstances that are brought forward, and students that are in and out of district. Thank you.
First, I want to say, Neil did an awesome job. I think Neil spends probably two to three hours in a given policy meeting hearing all the complicated things that we deal with. And I think it comes at him, you know, from the way that I communicate, probably fast and quickly at times. So I think he did, if you're, as a professor, you get an A on that response. It's really complicated. It's not really important. But the reality is, you, you have a process. So there's the truancy process and attendance policy process, which we have to follow, three six-day notifications. So let me start with an example. We have students who could be runaway. And we know where they are, we know where they are in the sense that they're a runaway, and their parents and the police are worrying about it. That student might be out for 10 consecutive days, but we don't necessarily drop that student because, as Neil said, you need to make sure that they're enrolled in another school somewhere, getting an education. So we've got to kind of find out where that student is, get them help. And if they are now living somewhere else, they have to register somewhere else. Homelessness is another area. Foster is another area. So there's all these caveats to what does attendance mean. And again, there's not a lot of teeth to the attendance policy outside of what we do, what I do, what the administration does. Because really, when you read the law, it's about CYS, fining. Back in the day, believe it or not, 10 or 11 years ago, we would, we would have parents locked up in this school district for attendance pieces. We haven't, we don't, we used to have a attendance court, truancy court. We don't no longer, we no longer do that. So we've moved away from, from a lot of those practices. And another key caveat to this is the child accounting that Neil alluded to, the 10 consecutive days. Now, when we have special education students whose parents may also be special education, have needs, we don't necessarily just drop everybody. We have an investigation process. We go to the homes. We try to find out where people are. We get social workers involved. We try to do truancy elimination plans. All of these are the front end that we're trying to do before we say to somebody, "We're dropping you. You've got to go." Now, when a family's leaving the country for more than 10 consecutive days, Neil's exactly right, and they're not going to be back for a while. They really technically have to disenroll from the school district because we're accountable for student days and the daily average attendance from a transportation reimbursement, from our, from our state, from our federal dollars. So we've got to be sure that our records are accurate as far as who's attending school and who's not attending school here in the school district. Believe it or not, we do deal with this frequently. We've been confronted by families who want to take the final exams in high school early, in like April or May, to go to enroll in another school in another country. And we really can't allow that to happen. There's only certain acceptable reasons to be missing school. Even trips, family trips beyond a period of time really have to be taken into consideration as excusable, allowable absences when school is in session. So we work with families, but there really isn't a way around. If you miss school for 10 consecutive days because you're leaving the country, you don't plan on returning, by that 11th, 12th, 13th day, you really have to disenroll. And then we work with you to come back in when you get there. But that's, that's the long and short of it.
Vice President Curry. The, nothing in the revised attendance policy represents the district going out on its own and writing its own, making up its own rules. So, these are all mandated things by the state that we have included in the revised attendance policy. So it's, not that that helps, but it says where we are.
I think it helps a lot, because I think it, it explains to the public tonight what that looks like. Whereas if you just read it, it's like, oh, if you're out for 10 consecutive days, you're just, you have to disenroll. So, I do appreciate the clarification on it because I think that our district is unique, as Dr. McGary just spoke about. And I think that there are a lot of different, as he just spoke about, a lot of different things that are presented. So thank you very much. Are there any other comments on policies that are going forward? Okay, well I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. Mrs. Kelly, if you could review the agenda items. Oh, is there any public comment?
Yes, there are public comments on agenda item number five. Would you like to hear those at this time?
I'm sorry, yes.
Our first comment is from Alona Shabani, located at 290 Child's Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the 26th via email regarding agenda item number five. The comment begins, "Is UDSD accepting and honoring mask exemptions so a student does not need to wear it inside the bus?" Question two, this is regarding the email sent July 10th by Dr. McGary. And then she copied and pasted Dr. McGary's email, which reads in part, "Lastly, it's important to note that under a federal order issued in January 2021, the CDC requires face coverings regardless of vaccination status when on public transportation. This includes on-school buses operated by public and private school systems." And then in parentheses, she adds, "Please research this before schools open." Comment continues, "Is UDSD and the school board aware that school buses are exempt from the mask mandate on buses per US Code 49, subsection 5302?" And she includes a link from cornell.edu. Question three, "Per CDC and FDA, the PCR test is recalled. How is UDSD handling, handling this situation for the future COVID testing?" End of comment.
Thank you. Do we, Dr. McGary, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I can answer those questions, some of those questions the board would like, and Kyle can, our solicitor can weigh in. But the comment about transportation and masks being optional, it's not optional, from what I understand, masking is required unless there's something that I'm missing. Schools also follow, clearly in the recent guidance that's coming out, there are different guidance for even schools in comparison to other businesses. So, I think we may have more strict rules than even other jurisdictions may, moving forward. As far as the PCR testing being recalled, I know that we, we will be offering rapid antigen testing. We do not offer PCR testing as a school district at this time. We offered molecular q-testing, which was a rapid q-testing, which was a, somewhat of a quicker form of PCR testing, but not the same. And we offered what was called rapid antigen testing, which is really most highly effective with, with students that are symptomatic going into next school year. We will be looking into doing rapid antigen testing again. And then also considering rapid flu testing, so that we know whether there are students who have the flu versus COVID, which would change the way that we handle maybe quarantining classrooms in schools. We'll be coming out with that information when we have more time. One of the changes with the testing right now is that we were at one time under the jurisdiction and the support of the Chester County Health Department. And they were allowing us to function under a CLIA, which is a medical term for collecting samples. And they were covering our schools locally to be able to do that. Now we're trying to figure out whether we have to get our own CLIA, or the Delaware County Intermediate Unit will be able to get one, and we can operate under that CLIA to be able to do swabbing of students and staff again. But I would say that we should anticipate that we will be doing testing, depending on positivity rates, again with students and staff next school year, and masking. I understand the frustration from this parent. I alluded to that earlier. It's one of those areas where either okay with it or not. I'm here to tell you that if, if we are required to do masking of students, we're going to, we're going to mask students in our schools. And we'll do the best that we can handle, handle it. I know Kyle Berman wants to weigh in as well. Kyle?
Yeah, the only thing that I really want to comment about at this point is the CDC recommendation relating to school buses. And the CDC has very specifically indicated that no matter what the masking requirements may be for the school district, that the, that bus transportation has to have a masking requirement for whatever grades may be on the bus. Furthermore, something you have to understand also is that by the funds that were given to us in March of 2021 through the ARPSER funds, one of the provisions in there is that we follow the guidance of the CDC. So in that respect, we're required to follow that guidance and have the students masked on the school buses, whether or not we are otherwise following other masking requirements. And then moreover, the CDC requirement also relating to masks was that the, until you can reach a certain threshold percentage within the school itself, that the school is supposed to be masked as well. Now, clearly there are differences in opinion of whether or not that needs to be followed or not, but that is what the CDC guidance is. And that is what the requirement is from the latest round of ESSR.
And Kyle, also, and Ms. Curry, and to this, to this parent, we do not have a local health authority fully established at this time. So we'd be under the jurisdiction of the Pennsylvania Department of Health going into the school year. And it's, I'm hearing that the Pennsylvania Department of Health is going to adopt and follow the CDC recommendations, which ultimately means we will be, as Kyle is saying, making updates to our health plan, which our health plan, as Kyle said, also had to be uploaded to our Title I documentation and to our funding. It was required to adopt the health plan in order to show that this, how we're spending this money is aligned to health and safety with students. So we really have to make sure that we're following the health and safety guidelines in accordance with the money that we have that's been given to us.
Thank you for that, Dr. McGary and Mr. Berman. Anyone else have any other comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Kelly?
So the first item on the agenda tonight was item number five, which was the reopening of schools. The district provided five models recommending, five instructional models, I'm sorry, for the 21-22 school year, and the district recommended option.
I'm sorry, Chrissy, I think there was one more comment.
Oh, sorry.
That community member posed a second comment.
Sorry.
Sorry. It's not your fault.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. The second and last comment regarding this agenda item is from Alona Shabani at 290 Child's Avenue, Drexel Hill. Comments was received on the 27th via email regarding agenda item number five. The comment begins, "Masks should remain optional. UDSD should not change the guidelines or think about doing so. Our children are suffering due to the masks. Masks do not work. Studies are proving that children suffer with masks on. We need to let our, our kids breathe. UDSD needs to work with the parents and listen to our suggestions and think of our children. Please keep masks optional," end of comment.
Thank you, Ms. Pughford. Ms. Kelly?
All right, so the first item on the agenda tonight was the reopening of schools, which would require potential board action. Five instructional models were reviewed, and the district recommended option number five as the instructional model for the 21-22 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. So this is going for. So this is going forward for board action. So can I get the board members to, if you want to send it forward, just give me a yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Ms. Kelly?
The second item was the comprehensive plan with that minor change to the graduation goal for approval at the August board meeting for the two, what is it, 2021 to 2024 comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. All that are, want to move this forward, can you please?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
The third item was the 2122 school calendar, the one-page revision, as well as the professional development calendar for the school year.
All board members?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
The fourth item was the high school course planned instruction, so the revision of three courses, the English nine course, the American literature course, and the music courses as presented.
All board members?
Yes.
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 Woo-hoo. And the last item was the Type to Learn cloud-based keyboarding program that was presented for our elementary students.
Yes.
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 And policies, the last one.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you very much, poor President Brown. Thank you, everyone, for the great presentations tonight and the great questions and comments.
Thank you, Vice President Curry, for facilitating that meeting. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Education and People's Services Committee meeting.
So moved.
Oh, I thought it was a snake. Okay, all right. All those in order, I'm sorry, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, great, thank you. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Take care.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.